Okay, I figured you'd want to get sworn in at some point tonight, don't you? My mic.
All right, we're getting this thing started. Let's go!
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I'll start by asking the city clerk, if we could have some... We could end the conversations, please. I know people are excited to see some swearing in tonight, so let's go ahead and try to get to that. Go ahead and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
I know, I'm just joking. Here!
Councilmember Pulapati, I believe, is absent at this time. Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Here. Got an echo on one of these iPads. We got it? Okay. Great, with that, I'll ask the... We'll move on to item two, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the television announcement.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays on Thursday, December 22 at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, December 23 at 6:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be checked out from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three, which will be our pledge of allegiance. And tonight, if I can ask, I think I saw our planning commission chair somewhere in the room, right? There he is, Mr. Reedy. If he could lead us in the pledge, and I'd ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation that tonight will be given to us by Dan DeShong of River City Christian Church.
I pledge the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to offer praise and honor for who you are and what you have done for us, especially this time of year at Christmas. We ask your blessings on this body of city leaders that desire only the best for the citizens of Rancho Cordova. You tell us in Romans 13:1 that everyone must submit himself to the growing authority... All in authority for those there is no authority except that which you have established. We pray for a new year of harmony among city leaders, among staff, and all agencies so that Rancho Cordova can flourish. Lord, your directions are clear. We only have two jobs: love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and love one another. We ask that you would be pleased with our behavior and our actions, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so moving on to item five, certification of the November 8 general election for the general municipal election. I'll ask the clerk to read the subject.
The subject is a resolution certifying the results of the November 8, 2022, general municipal election with regard to two members of the city council. The city council declares that the results of the election for each city council office voted on in a municipal election. As a result of this election, the following council members have been elected to the city council for full four-year terms. Linda Budge, Garrett Gatewood. It is recommended that the city adopt the resolution certifying the results of the November 8, 2022, general municipal election with regard to two members of the city council.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to... For the item?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Sander, a second by Budge. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent at this time. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Item is agreed to. Moving on to item six, special ceremony swearing in of council members. We will begin tonight by swearing in Councilmember... Vice Mayor, excuse me, Linda Budge, who will be sworn in by Supervisor Donna Toley. How about it?
Okay, very good. Okay, that's right. You want to get this on camera? Are we on camera?
They'll see the back of your head.
Well, I'm in good company. I'm with you with the Vice Mayor, so... Well, I'm delighted to be able to join my very good friend and longtime colleague, Linda Budge, and I'm very honored, Linda, that you would ask me this evening to... As one of my remaining kind of final duties in office, as I have just a few days left as member of Board of Supervisors, but to come here this evening to administer the oath of office. And that's right, she reminds me, when Cityhood was first approved and Linda was a founding member of the council, I was able to swear her in some 20 years ago now, so... Good things continue to happen here in the city, and obviously, folks have returned to you to office on several occasions. So with that, it's going to be... Do this so I can administer it, so why don't... Yeah. Oh, no, I tell you, you can just repeat, and I'll...
Okay, all right. Super.
How's that work? Okay? Very good. Okay. Right hand, and please repeat after me. And this is for the Office of Councilmember of the City of Rancho Cordova, for the term that will expire December 2026. So aye.
Aye, Linda Budge.
Very good. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States and of the State of California.
Very good, you're way ahead of me. And then I take.
And then I take.
This obligation freely.
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
It's official.
So help me God.
All right, one down, three to go. Two more after this, after this next one. So, the next one, I will... Will be Councilmember Garrett Gatewood, who will be sworn in by his father, Stephen Gatewood.
Boys. Come on, you're worse. You're bad. Come on, you gotta be up here for this.
Hey, get over here, Dan. Yes. Get on this side. Boys, over here. That's good, all right. I got it. There you go, nailed it.
Okay. Are we ready, family? I think you gotta put your hand in.
I do.
Aye.
Aye. Garrett Gatewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Garrett Gatewood. Picture, Dan.
Want to take a picture?
Yeah, Mom, come here. Jacob, come here. No, right now. In the moment.
Garrett, family, please.
Get on in this, love. Feel the love. Thank you. Thank you. We're halfway. Okay. Next, we'll move on to item seven, selection of mayor and vice mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to nominate as Vice Mayor David Sander and as Mayor Linda Budge. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Terry, a second by Pulapati. Roll call, please.
Writing that down.
Sure. It's recorded, too, though, but we'll be okay.
Councilmember Gatewood.
I'd like to abstain. No, I'm just joking, I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Motion is agreed to. Congratulations.
Thank you.
20 years of Rancho Cordova. So now on to the second half of our ceremonial swearing ins tonight. We'll begin with the swearing in of Vice Mayor. So I'll call upon Vice Mayor David Sander to be sworn in by Dr. Margaret Parsons. There, she did join us. I was looking for you. These muscles not good.
I don't have it memorized. I've done it once or twice, but it's not memorized.
Why do all our sons do the same thing?
I can use anybody's. I know how to not mess with the name.
They're these.
Thank you so much, city clerk. For the office... For the Office of Vice Mayor, City of Rancho Cordova. Aye, state your name.
Aye, David Sander.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Mr. Gatewood, thank you so much.
And David, I think your actual swearing ins for that one are right there. Did you get a second one? So next up, and to end our ceremonies here, we'll ask Linda Budge to be... Come back up and be sworn in again by Supervisor Donna Toley.
Okay. Can I stretch it out? Okay. You want to read some more?
No, you read more.
Okay, I'll read more, okay. All right, well, this is the oath of office for the Office of Mayor of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova. Aye.
Aye, Linda Budge.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
And Madam Mayor, I just take a quick occasion here to congratulate Councilmember Sander on his being elected Vice Mayor, to Councilmember Gatewood on his election to a four-year term in the council, and certainly, congratulations to all five of you for your willingness to serve and the, I think, the care and time that you dedicate to this city and to its people. And again, I congratulate Linda, and thank you, Linda, for allowing me to do the duties here this evening. I offer my congratulations and pray God's blessings on all of you and your city and the people that you all serve so ably and capably, so congratulations.
And I need to ask our outgoing mayor, Donald, to join me down at the podium. And I have to say that this is something that has definitely gotten higher class in 20 years. It's about 20 pounds heavier than it was before.
But I'll take it now.
We want to present to Donald his gavel, always engraved, something for his "Love Me" wall, that will show his... Part of his service to the City of Rancho Cordova over this last year, and as we used to... As we said originally for... To Dave Roberts, for piloting our little ship of state through the year, so thank you, Donald.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda, and thank you, colleagues, for their trust in the last year. This photo is actually from the fun run at 4th of July that my kids and I were at the start of, but then had to run back to start the parade. So we didn't actually get to run, we just got to wear the shirt and then sprint back about 100 yards. I just want to take this opportunity, one, to thank our city clerk, our city manager, our city attorney. This has been a trying year in a lot of ways. For those who don't remember, shortly after being sworn in as mayor in January, we postponed the mayor's luncheon because of the spike in COVID. We weren't... We were still wearing masks. I was still sworn in as mayor, virtually. We did it before... We did it recorded outside before. We've come a long way in a year. We've come a long way in a year in working together. We've had some really exciting, cool projects finished, like a new youth center. We've moved forward on a community center. We've hired a new city manager that's going to start here in just a couple of weeks, as if you're reading the agenda, you'll see that, too. A lot of big lifts were done this year, but they couldn't have been done without the hard work of the people that are here each and every day. For those of you who don't know, we're only compensated to work here maybe an hour and a half a month. We work more than that, but we still aren't here 40 or 50 hours a week. It's the people that work here every day that make this place what it is. And I just want to thank each and every one of the people that work for this city and all of the other organizations that we fund and that we support throughout the year, whether it's through Measure R or through Measure H. This city has entrusted this council and this community with millions of extra dollars that other communities in this region and this state don't have. And we are all very thankful for the trust that you've placed in us, the trust that you've placed in me over this last year, and thank you very much also to my family, who, while I may have been home for a lot of virtual meetings, I was stuck in my office till very late nights many, many times this year, or away from home. So thank you for your support and your understanding during that time, and hopefully I can have a few less phone calls and a few less meetings this year. But thank you very much, and congratulations to all of the newly sworn in folks. Wait, who am I looking at?
Oh, that's beautiful.
Okay.
So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to take a 15-minute break now and hopefully be back about 6:15. Thank you. There's cupcakes in the lobby. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone once again to tonight's regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council. And we have one final presentation to make tonight, and for a lot of us, this one will absolutely be the hardest. So I'm going to ask the city manager to join me down front. So this... There's no question that... That tonight is a celebration, and it's a celebration in a lot of ways, but it's also really bittersweet, as we have to say goodbye for 2022 to our city manager and our very dear friend Cyrus Abhar, who has chosen to retire, and we congratulate Vida on having him back home again and his family. And whereas, city manager Cyrus Abhar was one of the first employees of the City of Rancho Cordova and has served the city for nearly 20 years as the city engineer, city surveyor, public works director, chief building official, and most recently for the last seven years as the city manager. And whereas, over the past 20 years, Cyrus played an active role in so many successful city projects, including creating new communities and neighborhoods, building Rancho Cordova City Hall and the police station, I want to thank the chief for being here tonight, and renovating the historic Matthew Kilgore Cemetery, and building the award-winning Mather Veterans Village, a first-in-the-region home for homeless and disabled veterans. And whereas, Cyrus has been instrumental in creating successful economic development initiatives, working to bring thousands of new jobs and hundreds of new businesses to the city, creating economic recovery programs, and providing support for all levels of education, including a first-in-the-region college promise program and free workforce development. And whereas, Cyrus was the champion who helped create a home for the arts at the Mill Station Arts and Culture Center, also known as the MAC, forged a partnership with the Center of Praise Ministries that resulted in the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, and was an active and visible presence for residents, businesses, and organizations, partnering and collaborating on projects while attending hundreds of community events. Thank you, Vida. And whereas, Cyrus leaves a legacy of vision, integrity, hard work, and humility, solidifying the foundation upon which the city was built, including a city that is financially healthy, maintaining a balanced budget each year, continues to acquire property for large community projects like Mills Crossing, and continues to invest millions of dollars in infrastructure projects. And whereas, as Cyrus retires from the City of Rancho Cordova, he also leaves a lasting organizational legacy of servant leadership, so many of whom are here tonight, strong internal culture and values, and a city team that will miss him dearly, as we will. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Council of the City of Rancho Cordova is honored to have Cyrus... Have had Cyrus Abhar at the city's helm and expresses its deep appreciation to him for his dedication, his high standards, and his genuine desire to serve the City of Rancho Cordova, and wishes him every happiness in retirement. Vida, come join us. I have one last thing. We want to present Cyrus with his very own key to his city, Rancho Cordova, and assure him that it will open the door to the executive washroom if he can find one.
Wow. I'm speechless. I'm not sure if I had prepared something to say, but I'm not sure if I'll be able to finish it. This is an extremely emotional moment. This is... This is something that I had not expected, Linda, and I truly... I'm truly grateful and appreciative. I just wanted to say a few words about, you know, the... This... What an incredible journey this has been. I... It was March of 2022. incredible journey this has been. I, it was March of 2003 when I was approached as a contractor to help the newly incorporated city of Rancho Cordova to form its public works and engineering division. And not knowing anything about, you know, what this journey would be like, but I can tell you, after nearly 20 years, it's been an incredibly wonderful journey. We've come a long way. This was absolutely the right decision for me to make, and, and I'm hopeful that the legacy that I'm leaving behind, the work that I have done, could have brought an improvement in the quality of life for residents. You know, I'm not, I never would stand here, take credit for all the accomplishments that Linda mentioned and read in the proclamation. This is, you know, this is a team work. This is, this is an incredible team that has been part of this accomplishment, has worked so hard to get what we have and all the things that you saw and you heard from Linda. It starts with the community. We've had, we have a wonderful community that has entrusted us, but they've given us their support and their trust, and we have been able to do so much with their trust and support in the community. We have an incredible city council. This is, you know, I think it was mentioned, that this city council is dedicated, is hardworking, and not too many people really know that this is not a paid position. This is, you know, they, this council receives a very small stipend, but it's for the hours they put in and the work they, they do for the community, it's an incredible sacrifice. So, council, thank you for your vision, and thank you for your guidance, and thank you for the support over the years. I, staff, I have so many wonderful staff here in the audience today. Thank you for being here. My heartfelt thanks go to all of you. It's, this is an incredible team. We've built a culture around selfless service. We have built, created values that is revolves around serving the community and being servants of the community. And we also have created a culture that is not afraid of making mistakes, but innovating. So that's why we have a very small team. We have a very small crew, but we've been able to accomplish a lot. So I'm grateful. I bow my head to all of you for your amazing support over the years and the work that you all have done to help me. And many community partners, you know, we work with nonprofit organizations, we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce, we work with other agencies, we work with many, many service organizations in the community that do amazing work. And, and so this is the culmination of, of the work that we do, we all do together. And lastly, and probably the most important of all, is the family, is this wonderful woman, she was still in college when I asked her to marry me. Thirty-five years ago, we, we joined the union, and what an incredible partnership it has been. She's been a friend, she's been a colleague, and has allowed me to spend my time, you know, the, the late, and thank you. Thank you for allowing me to stay, long days, night meetings, weekend events. It's, you know, being a city manager, being a public employee, it's hard work, and, and it takes, it takes a great deal of yourself. So thank you for allowing me that. And I, that's one thing I'm looking forward to in retirement, that I will have more time to spend with this wonderful woman right here, and my, my beautiful children, who are my son and daughter, who's, who are not here tonight. So I'm grateful for this recognition. I'm thankful for this recognition, and I'm also very grateful that the city council has chosen to, as a later item on the agenda tonight, to, to pick one of our team members as my successor, somebody who will succeed me. This is a great testimony to the amazing work that this team has done, and the great journey that we will be taking. I cannot wait to see and watch the amazing heights this wonderful community is going to reach. I'm confident, and I will be coming and cheering from afar or from near. I will be around. Thank you again, council.
I was gonna say, why is David holding?
No matter how that works.
Let's see. I'll, I'll try to hold both.
There we go.
on an item that is not on the agenda are welcome to do that. And please take three minutes. There's a whole bunch of interesting information here. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raised hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you are participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, when we get to items on the agenda, then we will absolutely ask for public comment for those items on the agenda. And we ask you to take your three minutes, and please state your name and your community of residence. But please remember that under the California Government Code, we cannot take action on an item that is not on the agenda, but we would be happy to refer you to staff or schedule an item for a future hearing if that's what's appropriate. So we'll ask the city clerk to let us know if we have anybody signed up for public comment.
Yes, I have a handful of speaker cards, and then I will go to Zoom and emails. So we'll start with Chuck Shaw. Following Chuck Shaw will be Tara Colvin-Bach. Following Tara will be Sid Harth. So we'll start with Chuck Shaw.
Great. Welcome, Chuck.
Hello.
Do you recognize Chuck? I know.
It's not that frightening. Three minutes, 400 words, counselor. Just so you're aware, any comments made that somewhat resemble the agenda are purely coincidental. Outgoing Mayor Terry, Mayor Buck, Vice Mayor Sander, Member Polpati, Member Gatewood. Twenty years, it's been an interesting, interesting run. I, I must say, first, congratulations on your 2022. 2023, 20, Donald, 2022 was no fun. 2023 is not going to be a great deal of fun either. I am proud to say that this is a tenured, experienced council, and even though you occasionally may disagree, that is the appropriate course, because all of you are charged and all of you follow the, the course of defending and honoring the city. But one of the things that has worked so well in the city of Rancho Cordova is its mentorship. I've seen a public works director become city manager, I've seen an economic development manager become deputy city manager, I've seen a public works engineer become community development director, I've seen an economic development manager become an economic development director. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a very appropriate course of action that follows here. It's mentored, tenured leadership. May I do all I can to suggest that you continue in that vein? It has served you well. It has made you a beacon in a community or in a region that could, could afford to shine more brightly. So congratulations to all, to outgoing friends who are leaving us, thank you. Incoming rookies, wherever you might be hiding, he'll do okay. And to all those I had the opportunity to work with for literally over the last 20 years, thank you. It's been a lot of fun. So when appropriate, the best of the holiday season, and if appropriate to you, a very Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hi, I'm Tara Colvin-Bach from Stone Creek, and I just want to say to the mayor, vice mayor, all the council members, the city attorney, city clerk, and all the members of the, of the city staff and the sheriff's department, this is for you. Okay, so this area, we now call our city, started as a very small community, supporting Mather Air Force Base with many farms and good fishing. At least someone told me that. Very tight-knit. When the air force base closed, the area, as part of unincorporated Sac County, lost some of its identity. Funding to keep the infrastructure in place was lacking. Everything went downhill. But a small group of dedicated dreamers wanted more and fought for cityhood over many years. That vision was to create a special place where city staff are not just workers, but caring members of a team. Each has some assigned duties and responsibilities, but are willing to help each other grow. They come to events after work and on weekends to volunteer. I see this. I see them all the time, always trying to make a difference in our city. The sheriffs are there, the city staff, they're always there to be of service. Their jobs are not eight to five, not ever, just like your guys' jobs. This group is small by comparison with other cities, and they take their responsibilities very seriously. They make sure we follow every law, every coding restriction in the developments or any kind of infrastructure build. It's sad that the same people who come to city council meetings, they personally attack our leaders and public servants. They spread misinformation and outright lies in our communities to rile people up and get them to complain, too. These people do not volunteer to help at any event in our city. They have no skin in the game. Please know that these are a very small group and not representative. People in this community see what you do for us. We all need to build each other up and not tear each other down. Our city is very special. Over 80 languages are spoken here. We're diverse and inclusive and fun. I thank all of you, especially Cyrus, who hired many of the new members of the city staff, as well as Micah, who is a great choice as a new city manager. Your leadership has created the special place we call home. I am very grateful to stand here as a member of this great community. I'm looking forward to a blockbuster 2023 for Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Stacy.
Next speaker is Sid Harth. Sid Harth.
Welcome.
You'll have up to three minutes.
Okay. Dear mayor and city council members of Rancho Cordova, my name is Siddharth. I'm a proud resident of Rancho Cordova. I wanted to briefly share about recently conducted Seva Diwali food donation drive. As we enter into this winter and holiday season, there has been a need more than ever for everyone to come together, help the people in need, and eliminate hunger around us, caused by COVID, food shortages, and rising food prices. You may have heard of Diwali, also known as the Festival of Light. During the celebration of Diwali, Seva International hosts Seva Diwali. Seva Diwali allows individuals to come together across the United States who believe in Seva Dharma. Seva Dharma essentially means service to humanity is service to divinity. In other words, it means to give back to the society where we live during the Festival of Diwali. As a part of Seva Diwali, we collected nonperishable food items and donated them to local food pantries, shelters, and to the people in need. We're humbled and happy to share that this year, more than 95 volunteers in greater Sacramento, U.S. City, Narancho area, and Rancho Cordova, from 33 local organizations, joined hand, collected 8,493 pounds or around 7,077 meals of food in 19 cities and donated to 14 food banks in six counties, including, of course, Rancho Food, Rancho Cordova Food Locker, where we donated 841 pounds of nonperishable food items. Seva Diwali in Sacramento was started back in 2019, and since then, the event has donated 18,662 pounds or 15,551 meals of food. Seva Diwali is a national initiative. In 2022 alone, the Seva Diwali program donated 630,660 pounds of food that was donated to 200-plus beneficiary organization. This donation will serve over 525,000 meals. This was possible by people and organizations coming together in 200 cities and townships in 32 states across the USA. Since its inception in 2018, Seva Diwali has donated around 1.5 million, million pounds of food. Happy holidays. Thank you. On behalf of the Seva team and the Nivad.
Thank you, Siddharth.
Thank you, Siddharth.
Next speaker is Shadarashi. Following Shadarashi will be Anil.
Good evening, dear mayor, city council members. I'm very honored to be here. My name is Athakshi, and I'm a proud resident of Rancho Cordova City, and I'm a current junior at Pleasant Grove High School, and I wanted to share briefly about the Seva Diwali event, as my peer shared before. And it is, also was coordinated by HSS, also known as Hindu Swim Seva Sang. And it is a nonprofit social-cultural Hindu organization, and Seva Diwali was done in the greater Sacramento region, U.S. City, Chico State, and in northern California, by bringing together many like-minded organizations. Seva Diwali inherited was by HSS a few years back, and it is a food drive program where Hindus, Jains, Buddhists, and Sikh dynamic organisms, along with individuals and communities, come together across the United States who believe Seva is Purva Dharma. Seva Purva Dharma implies that service to humanity is the highest religion. This is considered one of the highest human values for the entire humanity, is to serve our community. While celebrating the major, major festival of Diwali, also known as the Festival of Light, it is essential to think about the less fortunate families who struggle to get two meals per day. This year, Diwali was at the end of October, and as part of Seva Diwali, HSS helped collect nonperishable food items for four weeks and donated them to local food bank, food banks, look, food pantries, shelters, and other needy people. And I'm also happy to share about HSS hosting the 16th Annual Health of Humanity Yogatan, or Surya Namaskar Yagna. It is a 16-day event that aims to create awareness about yoga and its advantages to both the mind and the body, and it is ignited to simple yoga posture in 10 simple steps, along with easy breathing techniques can provide immense health benefit to both the mind and the body. Each year, Hindu worldwide celebrate January 14th as Makasankranti, and it is the day where the sun enters a celestial path where the days become longer. And it is to mark this occasion that HSS organizes the Health for Humanity, where from January 14th to January 29th next year in 2023, and this year also, we invite all our community members here in Rancho Cordova to join us. Everyone is invited, including community groups, yoga centers, students, and individuals to learn and participate in Health of Humanity Yogatan. And this program is open to everyone, no matter how old you are or what you believe in. On behalf of Hindu Swim Seva Sang and the local community, we wish you a very happy holidays. And I have also given the clerk office a Seva Diwali report and an annual report of HSS that you can read on your own leisure. And thank you so much for listening. Dhanyavad.
Thank you. Anil?
Anil Kondakrindi, Planning Commission Chairman, Anatolia resident. Congratulations to the newly elected mayor Linda Baj and council member Garrett Gatewood, and newly-appointed city manager, Maikarana. And I would like to thank you, take this moment to thank you, our city manager, outgoing city manager Cyrus Abhar. I think 10 years back, I, I saw him first time at a city hall, and I had an informal conversation, and I thought, you know, he's so inspiring. When I looked at him, when Cyrus can be work with the city of Rancho Cordova, I think I can work with city of Rancho Cordova. He inspired young immigrants like me. There are a lot of immigrants- There are a lot of immigrant community in the city of Rancho Cordova. When they know about Cyrus, that he runs the city, they are really inspired. And we are gonna miss you, Cyrus. Thank you for your service. And city of Rancho Cordova has made tremendous strides in its economic and social development in the past two decades and is poised to realize even faster growth in the years to come. Now we are we are embarking on a new growth path. City of Rancho Cordova has a rich choice set in determining its future growth path. Knowledge can make a difference between poverty and wealth. Which growth path city embarks on in the future will depend on how well the government, private sector, and the civil society can work together to create common understanding of where the city economic development should be headed and what it needs to be get there. City can no doubt reap tremendous economic gains by developing policies and strategies that focus on making more effective use of knowledge to increase the overall productivity of the economy and the welfare of its population. Embracing the knowledge economy, the time is very favorable to city to make its transition to the knowledge economy. An economy that creates, disseminates, and use knowledge to enhance its growth and development. In doing so, we will be able to improve our competitiveness and join the ranks of other cities that are making a successful transition to the knowledge economy. The increasing importance of knowledge creates both the challenges and opportunities for society like ours. Challenge in that we need to be competitive and must be able to participate effectively in the knowledge-driven supply chain markets and that now dominates the global economy. The communities who prepare themselves to face this challenge, the knowledge and information revolution can contribute greatly to promoting economic growth and social development to reducing the poverty. City of Rancho Cordova can tap into several strengths as it's transform itself into the knowledge-based economy. Skilled human capital, progressive city leadership, dynamic private sector, and a rich cultural base that generates wealth of ideas as well as a social local niche in our information technology. City of Rancho Cordova readiness to embrace the knowledge economy, highlighting that to grow and be competitive, city must continue to invest in developing educated and skilled workforce to build the strong economic development.
Your time is up.
World Bank stated the knowledge-based global survey report. Economy is not merely built by physical and natural resources alone. Economists in the knowledge-based global society for twenty-first centuries are increasingly built upon human resources. Human resources are going to be dominate the knowledge economy. I'm looking forward to working with the city leadership to formulate tangible and practical initiatives to help city of Rancho Cordova to realize its full potential in the global knowledge economy. Sorry, I took extra time. Thank you.
The next speaker, Amog. A-M-O-G-H. Amo. Thank you.
Good good evening and Namaste to the respected mayor and all the city council members. Many congratulations to the people who got elected for the new year of two thousand twenty-three. My name is Amog Itigee and I'm in seventh grade studying at Winston Churchill Middle School. I am living currently in the city of Orangeville and I would like to talk more about the Seva Diwali organization. In addition to what Siddharth and Satakshi both have said, I would like to add a few more initiatives that we've done throughout this drive. Not only have we contributed in the food items, but we've also spread the message of Diwali, the Festival of Diwali, of how to spread light everywhere. And also, all the kids that were part of this drive spread this message in their schools and communicated with the principals to help donate to this food drive and help spread the message. We've done two car parades in the Sacramento region in which both Sacramento and Roseville. We've decorated about thirty cars with lights and spread the message of Seva Diwali and Diwali to everyone who has spectated us. Roseville's city council member Scott Albert also participated in this event. Now, I would like to share my experience throughout this food drive. I've helped donated to Eldorado Food Bank of six hundred pounds of food and also helped donate to Loves and Fishes, which was held in Sacramento for of about one thousand pounds of food donated. I've also assisted in help donate to many drop-off locations in greater Sacramento area such as Folsom, Orangeville, Fair Oaks, Roseville, et cetera. I've also felt happy in donating and making sure the needy people who need food and shelter and make sure they feel happy. Next year, I would like to, I would, next year, I would like to meet new people in this food drive and also tell them to spread the message of this drive to everyone who wants to participate and help the people in need. Once again, I feel very proud of being part of this Seva Diwali food drive. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, Amo.
Next speaker is Sri Krishna.
Hello, everybody, and good evening to the mayor and the city council of Rancho Cordova. My name is Sri Krishna Sanidhi Valamuri and I also contributed to the HSS food drive and for the backpack drive that we did recently. And HSS is a nonprofit organization and we have helped so many people throughout this event and with many other community service activities. For example, I have collected five hundred dollars for our backpack drive and twenty-five backpacks and that are full of school supplies to help children in need and parents who can't afford to buy supplies for their children. My experience with this was actually really great because I felt really good helping people in need. And I have gotten the opportunity to help put smiles on children's faces and make their education a little bit better by donating all of these supplies and donations that other people have helped me collect. And I would also like to thank my friends and family and some of the people who live in my neighborhood and my teachers who helped me collect all of these backpacks and supplies and donations for these children. And for the food drive, I have collected three hundred LBs to help with this community service project. And I would I would also like to say that it has been a great opportunity to help all these people and contribute with HSS. And I would like to also conclude this topic with saying thank you to the HSS coordinators and everybody who helped me with this food drive and backpack drive and many drives later on. And I would also like to say, thank you so much for this opportunity. Happy holidays and Dhanyabad.
Thank you, Sri Krishna.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, but I do see a hand raised in Zoom. So we're gonna go ahead, James Garcia. I'm gonna go ahead and then mute you and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, James.
Evening, this is James Garcia. I'm a resident of Stone Creek. I just wanted to say congratulations on everyone who for their reelection and appointment to mayor there on this budge and vice mayor to Mr. Sanders there and Garrett on your reelection as well. Again, and thank you Cyrus for your your service to the city. I know we've all had our fun and challenges over the years and on a lot of projects, but I definitely appreciate everyone's effort and continued support in hearing the residents' concerns, especially in our neighborhood here in Stone Creek recently over the course of the year. And just wanted to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone as well.
Thank you, James.
Thank you for everything.
Mayor Budge, I'd also like to include that we, the city clerk's office, did receive a public comment via email from Eric Weiniger that has been distributed to the city council. It's made available to those in the council chambers in the back of the room and has also been placed on the city's website.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay.
I do not see any other hands raised in Zoom.
So we'll conclude public comment and we'll go into council reports and we'll call on Donald.
Thank you, I'll be brief. First, just to thank Cyrus and staff for a great holiday party for for the staff out at the U Center. I know, one, I think it was great that the staff got to see it, but a lot of our families were also very excited to finally be able to go out and see the facility and see what you could actually hold there and handle there. So I thought that was fantastic. I want to thank Powell for the fun run that they held here on a toasty cold morning of about thirty-one degrees, I think, when it kicked off. We saw, we actually had our chief of police there, which I hear later was not your dog that you ran with, but you were helping somebody out and had had a very cute, I don't know, fifty, sixty-pound bulldog that he was bringing along with him on that run. But then also former Chief Gould I saw running in it and a lot of other folks. Great event. I think the the venue and they started here at city hall and ran through the business park on this side. So there wasn't nearly the number of thoroughfares that needed to have road closures. I think that worked a lot better for probably everybody and raised a lot of funds and toys and stuff for kids in need. We had what I hope is the final mobile home ad hoc committee for the mobile home parks policy. That'll be coming before council hopefully here in the next month or two. But we did actually hammer out an agreement. And thank you, Micah and Stefan, for your staff and support on that. I'll I'll just be really frank, I think the deal is better than I ever would have expected. And to be honest with you, I think it's a better, it's a, it has more resources and and better things for the residents than we than we would have had in the ordinance. And I can speak more to that when we get to it. But the the assurances and things that we got out of the industry and offered, frankly, was better and and it was made clear that they had legal options that probably would have circumvented a lot of the things that we would have been able to to adopt. So again, thank you to Stefan and Micah for your patience as we worked on this for the better part of six months. I had got to guest conduct for the second time for the Rancho Cordova Orchestra. I think I did a little better this time. It was at the high school and it was the official holiday concert, it was a little bit longer. My wife had flown out to a conference the day before, so my sons got to come and sit through watching me conduct Feliz Navidad for a second time. But I feel like I'm a pro now and I got my own baton to prove it. So thank you to the orchestra for that opportunity. And again, just thank you for the last year. It's been it's been a pleasure to serve.
Super, thank you, Garrett.
Okay, first off. So probably my most favorite event I got to do is the Holiday Run. Not Holiday Run, but Holiday Star Event. So that's where, if you guys don't know, as a community, our police chief shows up and we throw this amazing event. We're bringing all these kids from Rancho Cordova schools and they get given backpacks. And then our chief gets to blow this giant horn and then the kids tackle everybody as they run into the stores to try to get, because the city and the the police give them a gift certificate. Most favorite event, always loved it. I love being in it because it's just so much energy and then you get the kids all excited and then you have our our families in need. And I really, like, bar none, besides the Christmas mall, favorite one to be at. So thank you for the chief being there. Thank you for all my my council members that decided to champion that really, really, early morning and the frigid cold. And I actually saw Maria and Linda do all the talking. And Miranda is actually quite a great speaker when on the news. And my funny, my family is funny because they're like, aren't you supposed to be, isn't, isn't Donald supposed to be speaking there right now? And I was like, yes, wait for it. And Linda came on and I was like, it's cold out there. But it was awesome.
Again, I didn't have a wife at home to watch the kids.
Listen, we all know.
I would have loved to have been there, but I'm glad you weren't. So it was awesome.
Then I had the Sacramento Public Library, had two meetings with them. Sacramento Library used to have all these issues with money and direction and guidance. And literally because Linda took over, because I can't take any credit for it. It's like trying to take credit for the Sacramento, the one that we said on that controls the water and the swampland. I had nothing to do with it, but I like to go there and actually claim that I did something. So you go in there, it's literally a seven-minute meeting. We say thank you to Donald Totally, we we thank the people and they're like, hey. And we go like, how's the budget? And we're like, we have, I think, a hundred million dollars in the budget right now and and set asides of somewhere of ten to twenty. They're working on how they can fund other things and we're looking at trying to put a library in Rancho Cordova. That would be my ultimate goal is to figure out. But the problem is, is like, where do we stick a library if we really think about it as a city? Which would be great to talk to my council members about and say like, where do we want to put the Rancho Cordova library? Because the center of the city isn't the center of the city in less than ten years. So where does it actually sit that could make the most? Because you want to have it, you know, you gotta have transit, you gotta, successful libraries aren't just libraries anymore. And so we had this big, long talk and they're like, Garrett, where do you want it? And I was like, I have no idea. But they're starting to put together the money and they want to make one big purchase because Rancho Cordova happens to be one of the largest cities without its own library in the region. They can't think of it, they even Galt has a library and they're a third of our property, like a quarter of our population. So they were really pushing on me and I'm like, I'm like, they're like, what ideas do you have? And I was like, you know, it'd be great, a circular library where we did stuff on the sides and and it's gotta be artistic because we don't want it to be just a boring building and I want it to spiral up. And they're like, please stop giving ideas. I'm like, no, no, you're gonna hear all these ideas because you asked. But I see that in the future and I see us getting our first library as we as we do this. Got to go see Cooper get sworn in, very exciting, by two past African-American judges, which is funny because one was a senior judge and one was, I didn't know there was a junior judge and I didn't know they had classes, but they they were picking on the younger guy. The old guy's like, see, I see you finally understand what place you have. And it was hilarious. But those two got to swear in, Mr. Cooper. And it's just nice to see, like, literally, like Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, Folsom, all the county, and they all showed up there to swear this gentleman in. And so I feel like there's a switch over in local politics where the people that are now taking the roles are people that friends of ours. Like, literally, right now, probably two-thirds of the community, I could literally pick up the phone right now and call. Like, if we need someone in Elk Grove or County Soup or an assembly member or something like that, I feel like they're all friends of ours and I feel they're friends of the people that are getting elected. So I think a lot of the frustrations that the county and the the police and all that stuff, I think that's about to go away because they can literally have realistic talks with them. So very, very looking forward to the next couple of years and I think we can get a lot of stuff done. And then I think I really want to talk about, and I'll make it really brief, but Donald and the Mobile Park Home is amazing. He went in there and came up with an amazing agreement with a group. And I think it's gonna be a starter for the entire region. And it's it's the way he was able to negotiate with these individuals and get all the mobile park homes in the region to all agree to something is unheard of. Like, I literally watched him say stuff and he's like, well, then you gotta do this and that and this. And he was like on top of it. So I think everyone in the community really, really, I want to make sure they know that the mobile park item that's coming before us is is majority of a very well-seasoned council member, basically having the city's best interest at heart and then coming up with something fair. So it's amazing to be it and it was cool to be in the room and get to vote yes. And that's all I did, that's what I do, vote yes a lot. So and then, yeah, it was, and then honestly, great party. Because I'm a boss, I don't get to stay for the holiday party except to eat the food and then they look at us until we leave. So I heard I heard it was an amazing party at the the center. Someday, I'll get to stay for the party and hopefully enjoy it at this. You know, the food was good. That's it.
Thank you.
I did not dance either. You never dance and we've seen it one time and you should never dance.
Thanks, Garrett. Siri.
I'd like to congratulate the newly elected council members. Thank you to the outgoing mayor. Congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. And I'd like to thank Cyrus for his service. We are grateful for your inspiring leadership and dedication to public service. It is not easy to say goodbye. You've been a mentor, you've been a great support on my two years here. But even prior to that, you've been giving me really good guidance. I will hold on to the fond memories working with you and I hope you have find what you need for when you're looking for your retirement joy and peace and you come back to public. you're looking for your retirement joy and peace and you come back to public service soon. We do need you.
Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity also to congratulate our new city manager, Micah. Congratulations and welcome. This is, this holiday season, it is the season of giving and of course, to my kids receiving. So I think, you know, we've heard the kids here speak about Saiva and they did talk about service to humanity is the highest religion. And I actually really appreciate the fact that the parents sent the kids to, you know, they're actually showcasing the need for volunteers and they're having the kids come up and talk about it. So I really appreciate the kids talking about how they volunteered in giving back to the community. Another giving back to the community event that I did attend and maybe ran was the 5K Ranch of Cordova PAL Run. I think the new venue is a really great place. It is a city hall. We had so many vendors that were showcasing their opportunities. We had 7-Eleven. I even saw council member David Sander's son over there, Charles, who was talking about STEM, my favorite topic, teaching kids over there. So we had many booths and stalls talking about Ranch of Cordova and all that it has to show and give. I also attended the MAC Mentors at Cordova High Lunch. Those that don't know, the MAC is a free, community-based mentoring program for at-risk and underperforming high school students. And there were many students there and alumni who were talking about how they benefited from being at MAC. So if you're not a mentor, then please, this is a great way to give back. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be relatively brief in my report. So I attended Jose De La Cruz's retirement ceremony, which was held at the RCYC, the Ranch of U Center. Yeah, you were there too, as well, Donald. That was a great, great celebration for a guy who's not actually retiring, I guess legally retiring in some sense, but he's not leaving us, he's not leaving
We sat the PAL run on Zed.
Yeah, there we go. Not leaving, not leaving our kids, certainly. And he's going to be a continuing feature here in Ranch of Cordova. And for those of you who don't know, he's been director of the PAL program, the Police Activities League here in Ranch of Cordova for a lot of years, brought it to a nice professional level of activity. And we look forward to a lot more success because of that PAL program. And part of the reason we have a Ranch of Cordova U Center to begin with, and RCYC, is the fact that we had a Jose De La Cruz pushing for it and facilitating the donation and setting the vision for this city about where we wanted to go. So kudos to him. And as I said, he's not going anywhere far. I attended the NLC Leadership Executive Committee Retreat in Florida this past week. It was very warm there. It was very humid there. And I can tell you Floridians really crank the air conditioning, even in December, so that even I was freezing when I went inside in Florida. It's the strangest thing. Someone has to explain to me why exactly that happens. But I had a great interaction with some of our NLC staff. And I just see more and more opportunities forming for our city with that partnership. So I'm excited about that. We've had so many community events this holiday season, as we often do in Ranch Cordova. And it makes me think about what really makes community, community. I've seen or been part of the Ranch Cordova Symphony de Orlé Christmas Concert. The Run happened this last weekend. We, of course, did our massive community tree lighting nearly a month ago or three weeks ago. River City Concert Band has done its concerts. There are just so many holiday activities. The Santa Train is going on in Hagan Park, courtesy of the Live Steamers. And you think about all of those events. And for those of you who've been in Ranch of Cordova a while, what our city was like when we were young and 20 years ago versus now, how far we've come in terms of community events like that, that actually build and make community. This is how we define ourselves. This is how a community defines itself, these sorts of community events. And we have such a richness now of these events to be proud of. So as I reflect over 20 years in this job, Linda, it's, we're past 20 years of an election that created the city and put you and I in these positions. It's amazing how far we've come. And I just want to thank the city staff who've made that possible. Cyrus, your leadership to make that possible. My colleagues, your leadership to make that possible. I can't imagine how exciting the next 20 years is going to be for this city with regard to things like, how does this community celebrate the holidays? So I'm really excited about that. And I'm just joyful every time I hear my colleagues talk about holiday traditions and Christmas events that really define us as a city and as a community. And Linda, I want to congratulate you on taking an oath tonight. I'm curious as to how many of those oaths you've taken and for how many agencies over the years. Your service to Ranch Cordova and the region is remarkable. I think you and Don Notoli in the same room together probably have more years and oaths of service.
That's a lot of swearing.
That's a lot of swearing, really a lot of swearing, the two of you. I hope no one YouTube clips that to an inappropriate TikTok video of some kind or whatever. But that is a lot of swearing. I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you, David.
On such an enormous, I'm not saying you're old in any way, but your depth of service is remarkable. And Cyrus, you have been a model public servant for us here. And I'm not going to go on now because that would frankly take too much time. We do have a big event coming on, up, celebrating his retirement. You will expect some and probably get some lengthier speeches at that point. Don't let that deter you. We'll all be very entertaining. And I'm sure Cyrus will cry. That'll be nice, too. But you have been a model public servant. And we are all better for it. So thank you for that.
Thank you, David. Your comments about, about events that grow and create and grow community are so well-taken. And, you know, a little bit like what Cyrus was talking about, we, we need to, we need to acknowledge that prior to cityhood, there was really like only one organization trying to bring the community together. But now we have the city, we have a very proactive chamber, we have a very proactive community council. We all work together to make sure that the city is a fun place to live and a really close-knit community. So. And in that regard, Cyrus's retirement is not the only one that happened. We attended the Retirement for Chief Harms at Metro Fire. And I also dropped by the mock lunch for our, the kids at Cordova High, simply because, as David says, this is a season of too many activities. But in order to help recognize these kids who are, who are creating a wonderful life for themselves, I took a whole bunch of Starbucks gift cards. If we'd had Dutch Bros open, I would have taken Dutch Bros, but instead I took Starbucks. And Conrad assures me that everybody really enjoyed it. We did attend the concert at the Performing Arts Center and got to see Donald stand up there and conduct Felice Navidad. I told him, you have to count to 10. They're going to do this 10 times and your arms may get tired, but you have to be able to count to 10 and go around 10 times. Both LAVCO and Regional Transit met. And the only reason that's really important to Ranch of Cordova is the fact that now that we are building that logistics center out at Hazel, there were easements and annexations that needed to take place, easements within, for sewer, water, storm drain, things like that, that needed to happen. And those all got approved. Garrett is absolutely right. I do believe it was 31 degrees the other morning at Target. And it took me an hour of walking around in Target before my feet ever unfroze. And I went to shake the chief's hand, our police chief's hand, when I was leaving an hour later. And he still had his gloves on in Target. That's how cold we were. And all those wonderful young people, I'm not sure Garrett left you with the impression, but these kids are children, they're in elementary school. Actually, there were two cute little preschoolers who were just little puddles of tears because they were so embarrassed to be there. But on up through sixth grade, and these are kids whose personal circumstances may be very challenging, but they are selected by their principals, too, from each of the elementary schools, as absolute standouts, both academically and personally, true stars in their school. And that's why, that's why, half a dozen years ago, a gentleman in the police department came up with the idea to recognize these kids. And they do get backpacks and they join their families with a $100 shopping card at Target. And as was pointed out so often, these are kids who don't necessarily shop for themselves, not necessarily the latest toy. They may shop for their families. They may get something for their brothers and sisters or their parents or whatever. But they are true standouts. We had a really terrific workshop about Westboro, which seems to finally be getting off the table again or off the ground again. And we're all looking forward to the opportunities out there. We have some incredible residential successes here in Ranch of Cordova, not the least of which is Capital Village. And we're really looking forward to being able to create something as successful as, as some of the things we have already. We want to congratulate Mills Middle School on their new drum line. They've had terrific publicity and they even woven the fact that Kevin Sims at Cordova High is looking forward to having it be kind of an incubator to help kids who are on their way into Cordova High and, and who'll be playing in the band. And then for all the new businesses that we have talked about, one snuck in that I didn't know anything about. And we went to dinner there last night in the location that used to be Mintz. It's now called Fiesta Philippines. And the food was quite good. And we were on a Sunday night and there were so many people in there. You really need to go and try it out. So that's my report and I'm going to turn it over to Cyrus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief. I've already spoken enough. I just wanted to let the council and the community know that we had been recommended for a $20 million grant for the pedestrian overcrossing on Highway 50 at Zimfendal. It's official now. California Transportation Commission approved the grant. So this will, this project is now fully funded. So it would enable the city to build a, an iconic, iconic bridge on the, on Highway 50, that the team hopes to take to construction either late next year or in 2024. So congratulations to our public works team for pursuing this grant.
That is just amazing.
Yeah. So this is an incredible accomplishment. The largest single grant its region received came to the city of Ranch Cordova. And lastly, I just wanted to say again, thank you for the many words of support from the council and members of the community. It's greatly appreciated. And that's all I have.
So we're going to move into our consent calendar, but we all are gonna, we are going to announce the fact that Item 14.2 is being pulled and will be moved to a date uncertain. So when we vote on the consent calendar, then we'll take, make sure that action is part of it. Stacy, do you need to read the title?
And Madam Mayor, we also have a change that we need to make to 14.8. So if you could pull that, please.
Right. So Stacy, do you want to read the titles of either of these?
I can read the titles of both. So 14.2 is a resolution approving the city of Ranch of Cordova goals and policies concerning use of Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982. And 14.8, the title for this is a resolution approving the budget for the workforce recovery programs and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with the workforce programs providers as outlined.
And it's, we're pulling it simply because there's going to be a date change?
There's.
Something like that.
14.2 is a date change, but 14.8 is, I think it's a modification.
14.8 is a couple of changes we'll read into the record.
Okay. All right. So let's ask the council if there's anything else on the agenda that they would like to have pulled.
Mayor, can I make a comment on 14.8?
I think we're going to discuss 14.8.
Yeah, we're going to discuss that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Stacy, do we have any public comment on any of the items?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, then we could entertain a motion for 14.1 through 14.7.
14.1.
No, actually, skipping 14.2. No. Substituting an action, instead of adopting the resolution, we're substituting an action that we are moving it to a date uncertain.
14.2.
Okay.
Yes.
So do we have that motion?
Would it be easier to move the items that we're not going to change? So move 14.1, 14.3 through 14.7? In one motion and then vote on the continuance and then take the item?
Let's just include 14.2 and get rid of it. Okay? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So, second?
Thank you. Stacy called the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
So, aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. So 14.8 has been read in. So Adam?
Sure. Two changes to the resolution for 14.8. The amount of the first, whereas that the city has allocated, just needs to be updated slightly from $2 million to $2 million, $2,44,164. And secondly, the recital that's included in the resolution needs to have one provider, Udacity, omitted from the list of identified providers. And we would ask that you move the item with those two minor modifications to the resolution.
Okay. Siri, you have a comment?
Yeah. I'd like the feedback of what happened to the last time we approved this, from the last times, last year's workforce recovery program. If we can get an update on the programs from last year.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, Amanda Norton, the Economic Development Manager for the city of Ranch of Cordova. Included in your packet this evening as Exhibit A to the resolution, there are the, I'm assuming you're mentioning the past metrics for the number of people who've been employed. Is that your desire?
Yeah.
Okay. So of the programs that we are looking to move forward with this year, the first on the list is DP Global Solutions. They had a certificate, the number of people who receive certificates was 71%. And there were 29% of the individuals who received certificates were employed. For the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, they had 61% complete their programs and 42% of those were employed. For General Assembly, they had a completion rate of 50% and an employment rate of those of 45%. And then for Women in Data, they had 85% of the individuals who completed that program got retained a certificate. And of those, 35% were employed. So to date, of the 220 individuals who received services through the workforce programs, 69 individuals were employed for a total percentage of 30% of employment.
Thank you. So of the percentage that completed, the rest just dropped off?
In some cases, they complete the program, but they may not have gotten additional certificate or in many cases, they dropped off. One of the metrics we shared at the last council meeting is that for workforce programs in general across in the nation, 17% actually find employment from receiving those, which is why we're looking at 30% for all of our programs going forward. Los Rios Community College has a completion rate of about 2% in four years. And Sac State went from a graduation rate of about 9% to up to almost 26%.
Thank you. Yeah, I do understand the finding of the jobs is a hard part, but it's the fact that when we're offering free programs for them to learn and we're still seeing a high dropout rate, that's where we'd like to, I'd like to see more improvement on.
Sure.
Either way, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Garrett. Garrett?
First of all, that's amazing. I know the number sounds terrible, but the fact that one of our governmental programs where we employ people, these also aren't low-paying jobs. These are high-end technical service jobs that are now based, now the individuals are based in Rancho Cordova. So that's amazing. I mean, if they could get, I mean, if government could actually turn around 30-plus percent and some of these ones had even higher than 30% on their job, graduation to job rate, that would be unheard of. So good job on identifying people that actually turn around, which I think the most important thing is not if you get a certificate, it's if you get a job. Because lots of places can produce a certificate. Rancho Cordova actually funded people that wanted to move, got them certificates, and then found them a job where now they're increasing their revenue in our entire city. So I really, you know, eventually when we, now that we have the group that's going to do the numbers and statistics, I want to know age, group, locations, all sorts of stuff, because now we can actually trigger down and look into this now that we have a successful program. And how do we even generate more success? Is it more money, more people, more encouragement? But yeah, good job on finding the individuals. I'm really liking this program, liking what you're doing with it. That's it. Thank you.
David?
Now for a different opinion. I guess I've got return on investment questions here. Doing some simple math, you know, if we're spending $16,000 for a participant, you know, 37% success rate, let's say we're spending maybe $43,000 per individual. That ends up being a success. So that's, sounds like a lot for training for an individual. At the end of that, and I think with the program we've done before, we don't know if it's a local job. We don't know if they remain a local resident. We don't know if they're employed six months later, or a year later, or two years later. We could gather data on that, but only after, spending a couple million dollars. And it seems like we're operating in a program area that's not really in our lane as a city. Educational institutions in the state are funded to the tunes of billions and billions of dollars. It's their responsibility, state responsibility, county responsibility to some extent, but as a city, this is something extra. And I don't know if, you know, this expenditure of $2 million is actually the highest and best expenditure of $2 million, even if, even within, you know, the economic development realm. So I would probably be more comfortable with this if we did something like, say, we will pay you for your successes after a two-year period when we have, when we can verify that what you did was actually successful as a job training program. So maybe you pay them half upfront and half in two years. Some arrangement like that. I would be even happier with a program that actually utilized local industry to fund it, instead of government sort of on the side guessing what kind of programs we could throw money at to try to get people into a job, maybe sort of kinda 30% of the time, and not knowing anything else about it. What if the industry that was actually in need of the employees was participating in it and we assisted with that? It's a very different approach from looking for contractors who are willing to do job training for profit, as opposed to the industries we're targeting to begin with and having them fund training that is actually applicable to what they need. Now, there are a couple of examples in here that I think are close to what I'm talking about, but most of these don't appear to be that. And so I'm unlikely to support this measure tonight, not because I don't support economic development or even some training efforts. I'm just not certain we actually know what we're doing here.
Donald, did you have any concerns?
Yeah. And I agree with both of you, and I disagree with both of you, in different ways. You know, David, when we were talking about Measure R, and again, remind me, a lot of this is ARPA funds, right? So this is one-time funds that we're trying to spend, right?
We will be using ARPA for this, yes.
So we're trying something with federal funds to see how things would work. When I imagined funding this kind of a program, when we first kind of talked about it, and we talked about even with Measure R, that we were going to do things around economic development and job retraining and putting, you know, helping people get into more resilient job sectors, what I thought of was working with the community college district and groups like some of that are on here, FCCP, you know, WellSpace, NCT, so Northern California Construction Training, right? Organizations that are here, that we know of, that have a proven track record in the community. I didn't expect a lot of for-profit workforce development programs and companies to be a part of that. And this isn't to knock anybody here because I trust our staff to kick the tires on these things, but as somebody who's come from public education sector and elected office, I'm always very leery of for-profit private university, no, I'm sorry, for-profit private job training programs like that. And we've seen a host of private universities in this, in this region, in this country go under and the degrees that they were issuing not be worth the paper they were printed on, you know, and job placement, you know, ratios of, you know, less than 10% and they were costing, you know, multi-tens of thousands of dollars to get the degrees. So I'm leery of exactly that, but I'm willing to experiment because it's federal dollars and we can see what works and then see if, if, if what you said, that if we don't see success, we don't need to spend our own money on it necessarily. But I think it's worth continuing to try it and to figure out if we have good operators that have good success. And some of these, I've known these nonprofits for a really long time, and I can vouch that a lot of them can place these people. NCT, I want to say their placement rates over the 15 years that I've known have been in the 70 to 80% range of the ones that graduate, that they end up in a trade and hired. And even though interest rates are up and things, there's still, the number of people leaving the trades to the comparison of who's entering the trades, there will continue to be a demand in that sector regardless of what happens in the housing market, that there are still public buildings that are getting built and other things like that. That there are certain things on here I'm just very comfortable with. Some of the, some of the more tech ones, I don't know enough about that industry to be as confident about how that works. And just looking at a lot of the, and I know this frustrated my colleague to my right the last time I said it, but this is the first time that I can remember in the last 20 years that big tech is doing massive layoffs. And are those the kinds of trainings that we want to put people into? One, that are very remote jobs that could go somewhere else and pay their taxes somewhere else, and we've invested in somebody to go be productive in Austin or San Francisco or Salt Lake City or Seattle. So I'm, I get it. But again, when I envisioned doing this, I thought, here's a big check to Folsom Lake College, here's one to NCT, here's one to WellSpace, which again, the health sector's been, you know, pretty, pretty in demand the last few years, right? And so if you were in food service and you got laid off three times in the last two years, going and getting a job as a, you know, x-ray technician or, or a physical therapist or something like that would make a lot of sense if you were moving into those, into those kinds of careers, and nursing and the like. But I also say that I think we've definitely carved out a spot and a niche for us within the community, which is the Promise Program and looking at ways that we continue to expand that, and we have, and saying that, you know, if you want to go to community college and you've lost your job and regardless of your age and, you know, even if you're not a veteran and you're not a graduating high school senior, but you want to go into these 10 job sectors, we'll pay for you to go to community college. And so I think this is a good experiment. We need to watch it. We need to figure out what works. But I will say, the, you're right of the couple million of keeping track of this. The biggest struggle that we have around the Promise Program is these kids graduate from Folsom Lake College and we have no idea where they went because they don't have to tell anybody. And so getting the backend data on some of this stuff is just really, really difficult. Maybe trying to work with some of the employers and see maybe a VSP, Safe Credit Union, UC Davis, Solodyne, you know, and work with them to say, if they commit a certain amount of money or funds or commitment, will they be able to tell us if these people have been retained over a couple of years? But aside from that, it is very difficult to figure out if this is working long-term because people don't have to necessarily tell us.
So it's probably really important for staff to acknowledge that this is the same conversation we had the first time we talked about this.
Same conversation we had a few months ago, a month ago.
And nobody's concerns have, nobody's concerns have gone away. And I also remember that the, it seemed as though the target success rate percentages were woefully low. I understand that they're higher, or they're high, higher than the success rates of other comparable programs in the region, but on the other hand, it seems like we should be setting the bar even higher. So, so if we have a motion on the revised program?
Mayor, could I, could I add actually just one additional factual point? There were a few references made to ARPA funding and the use of ARPA funds for some of these programs. And we, I do want to just note that there, there is one entity that we don't have on the list this year, but from a compliance perspective, we are working quite aggressively with because we did, we do have strong reason to believe that they attempted to charge the city for the same services that were already, identical services which were already available to our citizens as citizens of the state of California. So I do think that, you know, for anyone who's watching, we treat the dollars you pay in federal taxes when we get grants just as we do the dollars you pay as, as taxpayers to the city of Rancho Cordova. And if we ever find out a company is attempting to have you pay twice, we're going to be very, very aggressive with them. And, and so we, you know, we, we certainly will be continuing to work with economic development to further cull the list and to make sure that, that you, you get the, you enforce the contracts that you enter into with these folks. And I appreciate their aggressive cooperation and collaboration in, you know, in monitoring and, and pursuing that, that non-provider. So we, we do know that, and you may well be finding out more about that as we continue to aggressively invest.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. And if I could just clarify, because I'm the one that said that, well, it's federal dollars. There are times, and to David's point, there are definitely times where this is our job and this is somebody else's job. In an instance where this fits in with the federal definitions and allowable expenditures, that's the time that I would say, we can go out on a limb and try to do something that isn't necessarily in our wheelhouse because it's an allowable expenditure under the program. I wouldn't necessarily just wake up tomorrow and say, let's spend general fund dollars on something that, that we're learning to do.
Thank you, Donald. So if we have a motion?
I'll move the item. Second.
With the, with the corrections that Adam?
Adam read.
Read.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
No.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go into consent public hearing items. And we are actually going to pull item 15.1 for staff comments. So let's open the public hearing for 15.2 and ask if there are any public comments on this item.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for item 15.2, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Colleagues, does anybody have any, any concerns about 15.2? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and ask for motion. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Okay. If you'll read 15.1.
Trevor Gilmartin Tentative Subdivision Map and Phasing Plan, Specific Plan Amendment and Affordable Housing Plan Agreement Amendment, Project Number PLND-0322-0032.
Staff?
Hi, Mayor Budge. Congratulations, by the way. So staff is pulling this item for a minor correction in the staff report.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, I'm Arlene Grenadoson Jones, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. So the typo correction would be on page two of your staff report. It would actually be for the second reading of the ordinance. It would not return on January 17th. It would be on January 3rd, which is the next meeting for city council. So that would be the correction.
Okay. Why do we have a meeting on Jan. 3rd? No, go ahead.
And that's it?
Yes, that's the only correction. But if council wants us to give the presentation, we do have the team here for the applicant and we have prepared a presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff?
I'll move the item.
Let's open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment or if the applicant wanted to say anything. Thank you, Bob. Stacy?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And David has moved the item.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Siri. Somebody did. Call the roll.
Who, the second was Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Terry. Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Yes.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you. So we have no public works, I'm sorry, public hearing items. And we'll move into regular calendar items. And Stacy, you want to read 17.1?
Public Works in Action: Clean, Green, and Safe. Sounds like a winner.
Are you making next? We'll welcome Albert.
Thank you, Mayor Budge.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And I'm pleased this evening to have the opportunity to present how the city is investing into clean, green, and safe infrastructure, both for today and importantly, for the city's And Public Works and the city, we are focused on serving the community. And the Public Works team is focused on serving the community through multiple services. And these services include traffic and transportation, engineering and construction projects, infrastructure finance, maintenance and operations, development engineering, and stormwater. And all of these services work together hand in hand, collaborating to maintain and build clean, green, and safe infrastructure with the intent of supporting our new housing and existing housing, our residents and citizens, our business communities, and promoting economic development, safety, livability, and very importantly, bringing people together and building communities. And I have the honor of working with top professionals in our region, some of who are, whom are joining us today for this presentation. And I'm going to introduce Dahlia Fadel next.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Dahlia Fadel, Principal Engineer, Public Works Department. So next, we'll talk about the stormwater program. At a high level, I wanted to provide details about what the program includes. It includes maintenance of and operations of all city-owned stormwater facilities. We do stormwater review of every step of development projects. We manage stormwater CIP projects in collaboration with our CIP team. We do regulatory compliance for Clean Water Act regulations as well as FEMA regulations and other statewide regulations related to stormwater. We handle flood control aspects of the city's program. And the program is funded using an enterprise And the program is funded using an enterprise fund that is only collected to be used for stormwater purposes. So we wanted to cover some of our accomplishments over the last couple of years. We have been successful in applying for and receiving two FEMA CAL OS grants. Those are first ones that the city has ever received. The first grant goes towards buying backup generators for four of our pump stations. And the second grant at $2.25 million will be used for the design and construction of the Monier Circle Flood Control Basin. We have also, in collaboration with Sacramento County and other cities within the region, updated the city's local hazard mitigation plan. We completed construction on one of the city's major outfalls to the American River at Outfall Number Four. I will be providing more details on that project. We also completed Phase Two of the stormwater fencing project at Bear Hollow Basin to improve aesthetics of the basin and provide security upgrades. I also have more details on that. We routinely maintain a lot of stormwater facilities throughout the city. This is just a snapshot on time, in time, because those facilities keep growing as we take on new areas of new development. And finally, we completed the stormwater master plan effort, which was an assessment study of all of our existing stormwater facilities. And then based on that study, we had a roadmap of improvement projects to do for flood control, control as well as repair. So next, I wanted to just highlight in more detail some of the activities that we do, as well as some of the projects. So for our maintenance activities, we spend, the program budget is close to $3 million annually. The majority of that funding goes towards maintaining all of our facilities, as you can see demonstrated by some of these photos. We do storm response as well, as well as compliance with the statewide regulations. The ultimate goal is really to prevent flooding, mostly local flooding, as well as preserve and improve the water quality of our creeks, as well as the American River. I did want to highlight the American River Outfall Number Four Repair Project. This was a huge project that really took a year of planning as well as permitting. The goal of the project was to repair some slope damage, as you can see demonstrated in the before photos. And actually, we have one of our staff engineers standing in the photo on the top just to demonstrate the massive damage that was under those outfall pipes. So we were successful in finishing this project within, ahead of schedule and within budget. And it was in about $1.3 million. And a huge collaboration with multiple agencies within that area and definitely a milestone for the program.
Could you just pause it there for a second? I hope everybody watching this sort of can see the contrast between what was and what is. And I think we need the context of what was is we took this district over, how many years ago?
In 2014.
2014. So we're about eight years in roughly to our management of our own stormwater system here in Rancho Cordova. This was managed by the county before. So the things that we're dealing with are old problems that have not been addressed, that we're successfully getting grant funds to address. And this is a really great photographic example right here of the difference between city management and what we inherited.
Yes, and this specific outfall was built back in 1979. Next, we wanted to highlight the Bear Hollow Fencing Project. So this project included removing existing old fencing around the basin, replacing it with rod, with posting cable fencing around the basin itself, and then rod iron fencing around the pump station for enhanced security and safety. For our pump station, the project was about half a million dollars. It is obviously one of our pretty famous basins. It includes a lot of special species. People do nature walks there. It's an amenity for the community, for sure. And we do have a second phase of the project that will include doing some enhanced scapeing of the frontage of the basin as well as educational signs, just to highlight the, the species that live there as well as the function of the basin for the community.
It is completely full of water.
It is, right. Next, we wanted to highlight some of some future investments or projects that the program is working on. We are working on currently design plans for improvements to our pump stations. We have six pump stations. There's a photo right there on the slide. We are working to modernize some of the pump stations that have become super old. It will also allow us to improve connectivity at the pump stations as well as remote access to control the pumps. Next, we will be working on a $3 million for the design and construction of the Monier Circle Basin. This is the FEMA-funded grant project. I want to highlight the photo for Sunrise Boulevard from last year when we had the massive storm in October of 2021. And it kind of demonstrates just the amount of flooding that we could potentially get in that area. So hopefully with the construction of this basin, we can alleviate that flooding. Next, we'll be working on a Mills Tower Assessment Study. This would be a study to assess the current condition of the capacity within that neighborhood, as well as the pump station within that area. That will be the photo also included in the slide with the street flooding at Mills Tower. And finally, we will be working on assessing the stormwater utility fee rate and how that rate is keeping up with our increased demands for the program. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Steve Herrmann to do the ONM slides. And I believe he's on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council. I'm Steve Herrmann with the Public Works Department. And I apologize, I'm at home tonight with a nasty cold, but I do not want to spread it around.
Thank you.
As I'm presenting on Zoom tonight. We wanted to highlight, continue the highlight of the themes of a clean, green, and safe city. So this slide is talking about our clean city and our efforts to keep the city clean. These numbers are for fiscal year 2122. We picked up 6,178 bags of litter on public roadways, 1,568 graffiti tags removed, and 1,205 illegal signs removed in the public right of way. I will tell you, watching our litter crew come to the courtyard at the end of the day with a truck full of litter is extraordinary to see the amount of material that they collect on our roadways daily. Next is our illegal dumping and bulky item collection programs. Those are both serviced by Republic Services through our residential contract. And I'm happy to report in that fiscal year, 27,400 bulky item appointments were serviced by Republic Services, made by residents and service. And in total, we picked up between illegal dumping and bulky item programs, we picked up about 5,000 tons of debris in the city in those 12 months. I just wanted to highlight also that our bulky item program, residents get three appointments per year at 10 yards each, which is well beyond the level of service that any of our neighbors receive. And next is our street sweeping program. And residents receive 14 sweeps annually on city streets. And in fiscal year 2122, our sweeper, street sweeping program, we collected about 80 tons of debris on city streets. We also have a very unique relationship, I think, with regional transit. We have a contract with them. They actually pay the city to maintain our four light rail stations. Our crews visit those stations daily, Monday through Friday. And they empty the litter cans, the trash cans, pick up litter, remove graffiti. And I will tell you that the presentation of those four light rail stations has much improved since we took it over, and they look fantastic. And then finally, we have a annual weed abatement program, both on the stormwater program and on roadways. And so for months, our crews are doing weed abatement. So next slide, please. So the next is around a green city. And these are sort of related to our sustainability efforts. And the first one is around our solid waste programs, residential and commercial recycling and organics. State, excuse me, state law requires that we divert from landfill disposal 50% of all of the waste that we generate. And our approved diversion rate is 68%. So we're doing fantastic with our recycling programs and our, our community does a great job. This last year, we also worked on our organics implementation. We rolled that out to 22,000 homes and about 1,600 businesses. We've also converted our fleet that picks up residential garbage to natural gas vehicles, which are much quieter and much cleaner burning than the diesel vehicles that they, that they replaced. Then moving on to our urban forest program, the city council approved our urban forest master plan this year back in March, which kind of provides a 20-year blueprint for our urban forest program. Since 2016, in the urban forest program, we've planted about 3,400 trees in, in Rancho Cordova. And I just wanted to highlight the photograph in the upper right of the slide. That's one of our planting events in Cordova Vineyards. And that's our Public Works Director, Albert Stricker, leading his crew. They planted four trees in one yard on that event. And Albert comes to most of our planting events and he's a great team leader. We have also, in 2018, we started our stump removal program. And since that program started, we have removed 278 front yard stumps in Rancho Cordova and replaced them with new trees, which has been a great effort. We have an, a annual tree pruning and maintenance program. These are city-owned trees. The city owns something like 4,000 trees. And each year, we prune and maintain about 600 or 600 to 700 of those trees. And our, the city-owned trees are looking fantastic. And then finally, we have, we have man, landscape maintenance contracts for the landscaped areas that the city maintains. And those include things like medians and neighborhood greens. And we have a lot of effort that goes into keeping those areas healthy and clean. With that, we'll go to the next slide. And finally, then, these are sort of some of our efforts around a safe city. And in our system, we maintain almost 6,000 streetlights, 130 signals, and almost 12,000 traffic signs. And you can see on the slide, the number of work orders, hundreds of work orders completed in a year. But these are really important components to keeping our roadways safe and our community safe. During that fiscal year, we filled almost 2,500 potholes in the public right of way. And because of the last rains, we have been out there doing a lot of potholes in the last couple of weeks. And finally, sidewalk repair locations, about 110 locations in that year. And we're making progress on our sidewalk repair backlog. And so these, these are all efforts to keep our city safe. And I just, I want to close my comments by acknowledging the men and the women who work in our city every day, working on our landscaped areas, picking up garbage, picking up litter, removing graffiti, maintaining streetlights. It's really hard work. And they work in the heat, and they work in the cold, and they work in the rain. And they don't get a lot of acknowledgement, but they do a really a fantastic job. And they contribute greatly to our city. So with that, I would like to pass it off to Edgar.
Thank you, Steve. Garrett or Donald, did you all have questions?
Where's the picture on the top?
Did you say where?
Is that Zinfandel? The other one looks like Sun River, maybe, or Vineyard. The one, yeah, the one on the top, I can't, I don't recognize where that is. And it's really driving me nuts.
I will find out and I will let you know.
Okay.
I don't know offhand.
Smaller trees and it looks like it's got a hill in the back. Unless that's Zinfandel. Just wondering. That's all.
Thank you. Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, council members. Thank you, Steve, for the, the great presentation. We'll definitely find out where that photo was taken. But as we transition into the capital improvements group, we definitely want to kind of continue the theme of accomplishments. And the last 12 to 18 months have been quite a, quite an event. We've had a banner year where the city has invested over $48 million worth of, of different types of funds to different projects. We have different projects that kind of span the, the full realm of public works, which is street rehabilitation, which is the two, the first two projects, which is the Cordova Vineyards, Cordova Lane, Mills Ranch, Rossmore Neighborhood Street Rehabilitation Projects. We have new road construction where we, over the last year and a half, we've been widening and constructing a new road along White Rock Road. We have pedestrian improvements and Safe Ross School improvements, which is kind of captured in our Cordova School Zones project, which improves safety to six elementary schools throughout the city, as well as separate ADA improvement projects that we've been able to, along with the ONMs sidewalk program projects, we've been able to continue and improve over several hundred locations throughout the city. Additional pedestrian improvements that we've done is we've done some crossings through some highway safety improvement program funds as part of our pedestrian safety projects. And then giving credit to the Operation Maintenance Division, they, they undertook a very large street surfacing project, which is captured on that last project under International Drive Surface Treatment. In all, it's, like I mentioned, it's over $48 million. But a couple of keynotes on this, on this particular investment is that 20 million of, or 10 million of it came through the community investment, Community Enhancement Investment Fund. And over 10 million of it came through grants. So over 20 million of that 48 was through those two funding sources. Just as a key project for the city, within exception of Measure R, the city was able to do two major neighborhood street rehabilitation projects. As mentioned in the previous slide, and this one is the Cordova Vineyards, Cordova Lane Neighborhood and Mills Ranch and Rossmore Neighborhood. In total, it was $24 million in investment. As mentioned before, 10 million of it came through the Community Enhancement Investment Fund. It's a very, very large set of projects. In total, there was three different phases. 23 miles of, of centerline miles of pavement, over 9,700 miles of, or feet of curb and gutter, 142 ADA ramps, 152 storm drain inlets, and over 4,500 feet of storm drain lines. Very, very large project that took a lot of coordination with not only the contractor, but the residents and the utility companies. And of course, sci-fi was out there at the same time. So there was a lot of heavy coordination with, with that project. Now, moving forward in the future, we have over 288 million dollars of investment. Of course, we have some significant projects that one of which is going to be discussed on the, on the next presentation. But we have the, the next two components of, of White Rock Road, which is Phase One, which is technically from Sunrise to Fitzgerald. And then the last phase, which is from where we left off at McCall, all the way to the East release city limits. That alone is over $27 million a project. We have the next phase of, of the neighborhood street rehabilitation project, which is about 15, just over $15 million, which just under a million dollars of that is actually going to be ARPA funds that we're going to advance a project for just the ADA and sidewalk improvements, which is going to be under construction in January. Mather Field Road Rehabilitation is just under $6 million. 3.7, yes.
My favorite.
I get, I get a lot of calls on Mather, so we're happy to move that forward. We just received approval of that grant from the Calfori Transportation Commission in, in October. So we just received the authorization. That was $3.7 million of that $6 million construction and will be under construction in spring. We're currently designing two different projects on Sunrise Boulevard, one from White Rock Road down to Douglas, and then from Kever down to Jackson Highway. Both very large projects. The project to Jackson Highway is, is a multi-jurisdictional project. It's, it's coordinated with the county of Sacramento as well as with Caltrans. So, and, and the United States Bureau of Reclamation. There is a lot of coordination on that project that we are hoping to be under, or complete with design in the next two years. Chase Drive, American Parkway Connection is currently. Um Chase Drive, uh America Parkway Connection is currently under design and then I have a highlight and more details on the next slide for that particular project, but that's a another uh bike and pet uh project that is going to expand the city's network. And of course, uh we are currently under design on the US fifty Rancho Parkway Interchange Project, which represents a significant amount of investment uh for the city, but is also the, the, a critical component of not only the transportation network, but the, the, the support of the future growth of the city as it, as, as we continue to, to develop in that southern region of, of uh the city and south of fifty. I do want to back up to uh, uh I skipped over the civil bike, uh bicycle and pedestrian over crossing and for one reason is because uh just to highlight on what uh council member, I mean uh City Manager Apar mentioned is that we did, received a very large grant and that's the second grant on that particular project. So we received a three point four for design and environmental. So of that twenty seven million, the city has almost got twenty four million dollars worth of, of grant funds. A significant amount of, of money on one particular project. So it's a very, very, very great project and we'll be presenting to uh mayor and council in, in January on the aesthetic component of that project. We are, we are advancing that. I did skip over it just to kind of highlight the next step on that particular project. Now, as a highlight on the Chase Drive America River Parkway Connection, um three point three million dollar investment. Couple of highlights on that investment is that it's grant funded for the most part. The city has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh as a, as a local co- component for that three point three project. The rest is funded through Secog and the STA. It's going to expand the city's bike and pet network, connect where we left off at the Chase Coloma Plaza Project at the south end and connect to the America River Parkway Trail Connection on the very north end. It's going to have ped lighting, fencing along Mills Middle, ADA ramps and high visibility crosswalk. Very, a lot of stakeholders. Um it's being coordinated with between the uh Sacramento Regional Parks, uh Folsom Cordova Unified School District, uh CRPD, uh Army Corps of Engineers, a lot of players in this particular stretch of, of, of trail. With that, I will hand it back to our director, Albert Stricker.
Thank you, Edgar. And we have a team of twenty six incredibly talented individuals on our team and they are supported by also very talented mini consultants and contractors are supporting them. And something that we all share in common is our passion for Rancho Cordova. And I would say that no matter where you live in Rancho Cordova, nor, no matter where you do business in Rancho Cordova, no matter how we travel through Rancho Cordova, um we see the investment that the city has made and the improvements in Rancho Cordova over the nat last twenty years and it's just been exponential in the, the rise and the rate of improvements and we're very proud to be part of the continuous improvement of infrastructure in Rancho Cordova and especially what that means for improving the access to education in Rancho Cordova, the role that infrastructure plays in solidifying Rancho Cordova as the city of choice for where people want to live, for where people want to cite their businesses and where people want to go to recreate. And we're also particularly excited with um some of the projects that our team has talked about uh going forward for how, what, what role the, these projects will play in the future of Rancho Cordova for generations to come. And we're all incredibly passionate about Rancho Cordova and we're incredibly passionate about serving our community. And I want to take just a moment to thank Cyrus for um his years of support to our team, his um uh his leadership in the culture that has attracted many of us here to this organization. Um his help and empowerment to all of staff in doing what we enjoy most, which is serving the community of Rancho Cordova. And thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Council, and we'd appreciate any uh comments or questions or input.
Thank you, Albert. So let's ask if you have any questions. Donald? Garrett? Siri?
No thi- no questions, but thank you for the wonderful presentation. I did have, I mean, it's not a question, but when they were showing the Republic Services picking up debris, they showed like a really good, it looked like a good condition bench chair that they were putting into trash.
I have the same thing.
So, um yeah, uh I was wondering if, you know, there we could do something about the really good items being put to better use. But other than that, thank you for the wonderful work and the wonderful presentation.
Uh sideline for you, Albert. Set up a yard sale and make a little money.
Let's also be very careful about encouraging people to um go through rubbish piles and, and bulky.
David, did you have comments?
Yes.
Questions?
Uh I really appreciate the, just as a little project that you pointed out there, the treatment of Bear Hollow in terms of upgrading its appearance, making it look much more friendly, making it look like it's part of that neighborhood, Stone Creek Neighborhood, as opposed to like an industrial facility that had been dropped in there because it was surrounded by ugly chain link fences. You know, it was like, stay away, keep out, this is dangerous. You know, now it looks inviting, quite frankly. It's been a, a huge, huge change. And I think that is a great example sort of of what we expect in uh in Rancho Cordova. So we've had this phrase around that I use in a couple of different contexts, but basically it's uh good enough isn't. Right? Chain link fence was good enough, but it really wasn't good enough. Uh what's good enough is something that makes it attractive and safe, or as you guys have been, you know, calling this presentation, clean, green and safe. Because what you do also, you know, increases the value of everything in this community. And that is a really clear importance to Rancho Cordova, particularly as an aging suburb. We have to constantly keep our eye on that ball, making sure that we are improving everything to the greatest extent we can, offering as much as we can. So I really appreciate your efforts there. I'm curious, how many neighborhoods do we still have left to do the, the repaving sidewalk repair ADA crossings? We sort of set out, you know, earlier in our cityhood to say, hey, we're gonna repave every neighborhood. Uh it's been a number of years since we've been on that project. We'd sped up in recent years, I think, but how many do we have left?
Um we have three currently that we're, we're programming when that's under design, which is the countryside. And then we have uh two, two other neighborhoods that are coming behind that. So every year, uh our approach is to be designing one year and preparing for construction the, the next year uh pending available funding, but right now, three more neighborhoods.
So three and then we're, we've done everything in Rancho Cordova.
That need, uh well, I may qualify the statement, that need major rehabilitation. So there are some uh neighborhoods that are still have prior paving projects that do resurfacing. So we are going to have, continue to have resurfacing projects, but three projects that need major reconstruction.
So our goal was to get to this cycle that was diminished in its um intensity because we dealt with all the big problems in a previous cycle. So it sounds like we're nearing the end of that first difficult cycle and we can move on to maintaining, which makes us much more efficient in maintaining. Is that an accurate depiction?
And we, we are nearing the goal of having gone through all of the, the neighborhoods in Rancho Cordova over the course of the, the next several years. Um one of the challenges that we have is um it's that those first neighborhood rehabilitations were done in two thousand and six. Um so we're, we're coming up on fifteen, twenty years of, of service life for those improvements. And so we're getting to a point where there's significant need to go back to some of those neighborhoods as well as the challenges of our arterials, which is a significant challenge. We, we still have deferred maintenance is one of the greatest challenges that we have from an infrastructure standpoint in Rancho Cordova. Um and in our roadways, our, our deferred maintenance is about ninety five million dollars. And in our storm drain infrastructure, we have a deferred maintenance of about sixty million dollars. Um and we've, we've been able to make significant improvements. We've been able to chew away at some of that deferred maintenance over the course of the last several years. Um but we still have a lot of challenges um ahead of us.
Absolutely. Um speaking of challenges ahead of us, sidewalks, we had a backlog of, I don't know, a couple, couple million, I think, in sidewalk repairs. Are we making forward progress on that now or are we still adding to our sidewalk, our sidewalk concerns?
Uh one of the challenges that we have with our, our sidewalk is that our infra, much of our sidewalk infrastructure is as old or older than the storm drain infrastructure that Dahlia referred to earlier. Um and so we do have an ongoing, not only a standalone sidewalk pro- program that we perform every single year that's been extremely effective. In addition, we also uh roll in sidewalk improvement projects along with our roadway rehabilitation projects that Edgar talked about so much. Um and we have been making great progress. We have been um addressing a lot of some significant impacts. Um the challenge is also the pace at which we're repairing sidewalk. There's a lot of broken sidewalk that, that is coming in. And so um as we're making progress, that, that list is growing on the back end as we're going along.
Good. I think Citrus Heights set off, set out when they were a young city to say we're going to repave everything in seven years or some number like that. I'm not sure they made it, the seven years. I think.
But you're right, they had a, they had intended a five year cycle.
Yeah, I think the cost kind of ran away with them. So that, it's a very difficult thing, but you know, for fair comparison, the county's previous schedule was a ninety nine year repavement schedule in some neighborhoods. So you know, even if it takes fifteen, we're beating the heck out of a ninety nine year schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really pleased with that. Um we've got some work to do, I think, on routes to the over crossing of Highway fifty. If the state's investing that much in this over crossing, we darn well better feed both ends of it, you know, with the best, highest quality bike uh bike lanes that we can muster. And that might require some modifications to our Bike Master Plan and prioritization of what those look like. Obviously, Chase Drive is sort of a step towards that, you know, getting in class one all the way out to uh, out to uh Coloma Road. Uh but we have to figure out how do we best get around that neighborhood or to Folsom or, you know, what is, what is that connection? Because we want to maximize use of that thing both ways, north and south.
Yep.
So I, I really, I think this year we probably will have to take that up, I'm guessing. Um and I'm really looking forward to that discussion, but great work, really exciting stuff. And remember, good enough isn't. We expect better than good.
Cyrus.
Yes, Council, I just wanted to make a quick comment and observation. This team here that you see on the screen is um almost our entire Public Works team. So I, I've been around Public Works uh for a long time. I've seen other communities and organizations. For the volume and magnitude of what they do and they accomplish, uh they probably have three, four times more staff to, to do the same thing.
Oh my lord.
So and, and the passion that this team has displayed for service is uh very representative of the passion that the rest of the city hall has. I just wanted, I'm very comfortable saying that as I prepare to leave this organization, this is uh uh truly, you know, this is not only about the public facing part of our organization, our finance team, our HR team, our communication team, our city clerk's team, they all have the same passion for, for service to the community and, and I really appreciate uh the work that they do each and every day. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment and I am looking at Zoom right now and I do not see any hands that are raised.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Albert. Terrific.
Thank you very much.
Stacy, you want to read seventeen point two?
Seventeen point two, a resolution um authorizing the acquisition of property at twenty three hundred Mineshaft Lane, Rancho Cordova and authorizing the execution of a real estate purchase and sale agreement. Certificate of Acceptance and Recordation of a Grant Deed and Presentation from Cordova Community Council on Potential Improvements to Mineshaft Building.
Okay. So. Cyrus?
Yes, I, I would, I would kick this off uh as the, as the team gets ready for the presentation. So this is um you know, a, a project that's been making in, since two thousand and five in the way of the, the interchange project. We, we embarked on the project. It was a condition of uh development for many, for many developments happening in the, in the south part of the city, a, a new connection to Highway fifty. And we initiated the process with Caltrans in two thousand and five. We initiated the environmental study. Uh we were able to go through that whole process and receive our uh certification from Caltrans, from uh complete the environmental document. And always as part of the critical path is uh ensure that we have the adequate rights of way to uh to build the interchange uh that we need. So we worked with the county successfully and the two large pieces of property that we needed to acquire uh were one on the north side of the freeway with right adjacent to Gold River, owned by the county and we were able to nego- successfully negotiate and uh transfer that property. If you have the graphics, I'm not sure if you have any of the graphics uh uh if you go to the next slide, I think there's a graphic that shows it. So the area, the, the triangle to the uh to the north uh adjacent to Gold River is uh was owned by the county. That property, that land has already been transferred to the city and we now own it.
Do we own the entire teardrop?
Yes, we do own the entire, the entire triangle. But and then uh, and of course, the other piece of property that we needed to acquire was uh the property to the south, uh the, that goes right through Mineshaft. And unfortunately, it's uh the, because of the design and some of the constraints we had on the design, it does go, it does affect the building and, and the existing building had, it had to be demolished or moved. Uh so in, in the way of background, I started a discussion and dialogue with uh Mr. Pat, Patrick Willis, Willis, who was the previous owner of the property and uh it, it goes back that far. And when the property was uh gifted to Cordova Community Council, uh we started discussions with Shelley Blanchard and we've had very good discussions uh. Um I believe starting, I want to say, two and a half years ago. Uh but uh these discussions have evolved. I think the project itself has evolved and the team is here to uh present a little bit of the evolution of those discussions and where we are today and what the next steps are. So with that, I turn it over to Edgar.
Thank you, Cyrus. Uh just to back up a little bit to the, the, the project. As, as Cyrus mentioned, the, the project has been uh around since two thousand and five. Uh in fact, the project was, it was originally planned as part of the county. Um always realized as a, as interchange, I was going to serve uh the south area, south of Ha- Highway fifty. In total, the project is going to be a new interchange at Highway fifty in about a two mile segment of Rancho Parkway that's going to connect down to White Rock Road where currently is improved as part of that current project. Um there's a lot of structures involved with this particular project. Um it's, has to span not only Highway fifty, but existing uh Folsom Boulevard, the Cordova Community Council property, the United States Bureau of Reclamation, Folsom South Canal, there's a Buffalo Creek and then two miles of, of ri- of right of way that we've already started coordinating with Westboro and uh the Eastern Development Group. So there's a lot of uh acquisitions related to this project, but all moving forward uh as we speak. Um as mentioned, the, the project does require an acquisition on the Cordova Council. Um and as mentioned uh previously, the uh this highlight, this highlighted area kind of shows the, the building in red where the, the, where the existing Mineshaft Building currently exists. The, the purple area represents the, the acquisition that's tied to item seventeen point two for the, the fee purchase in the building. Um and then the yellow area represents an access easement that provides a, in perpetuity access from Folsom Boulevard down to the property that we were going to own for the structure. So um as mentioned, we, the project was started in two thousand and five. Uh a lot of work occurred in two thousand and five to two thousand and sixteen where the project report was approved by Caltrans, the environmental document was approved as well. And then in two thousand and eighteen, roughly, the city and Cordova Community Council began negotiations on the acquisition necessary for the structure. Initially, the approach was to acquire the, the fee land and then the, the building would be removed as part of that. But in two thousand and twenty two, early two thousand, this year, the city and, and Cordova Community Council started discussing the, the, the possibility or request of relocating the building, which uh the city is open to. Um so the two things that we're going to discuss today is, or really present is, we have acquisition for the fee fee title, which is the four point nine two. for the fee, fee title, which is the 4.92 million dollar figure that's identified in Item Number 5, and then a set aside for the 1.28 for additional relocation support. And then Executive Director Shelley Blanchard is going to discuss Items Number 7 and 8 in terms of the relocation of the building and additional enhancement that, that is being proposed. With that, I will ask Executive Director Shelley Blanchard to, to come and speak to that item.
Let's ask Garrett and Donald if they have questions of Edgar. Siri? David? Okay. Shelley?
All right. Well, I hope everybody's got their dream big, you know, brain installed for tonight because this is some big thinking, which we love to do around here in Rancho Cordova. So first, I'd like to start out by describing to you what we think the Mineshaft property could look like within a couple of years. As you heard, we have to pick up the building to make this happen. And can we do it? Absolutely, we can. We've had it engineered and looked at by experts, and this is a proud old building, built in the 1980s for, to, for the amusement of Sacramento and Rancho Cordova, and we'd like it to live on in that way. So as you can see from the photo, we would be picking up the building, which is sort of a gray square off to the left and twisted and relocated a bit to the east and reconfigured on the property to show off the beautiful windows that we think are something that the travelers coming up over that interchange and down Folsom Boulevard really will want to see. What we're looking at here is, I'm going to go get a little bit closer in. The proposed building location doesn't move very far, but as we've gotten into this, we have decided that, you know, knock, opportunity is knocking, and we'd like you to consider investing in this big idea for Rancho Cordova. And that is going to come to you in two parts. If, with the money you are spending to acquire the property, what we can do is we can move the building pretty much as it is configured today, and it will be a new building. It'll be a new version of what exists today. What we'd like you to consider is investing in us so that we can put this square that's coming off the back as a tenant improvement that would bring us a whole bunch of improvements that would make the building more usable. And they include, this is a two-story addition that would include things like a catering kitchen, brand-new restrooms. It would relocate the elevators so that it is, it could be a bigger and more functional elevator that would be able to move tables and chairs and that sort of thing that makes a building more usable. There's room there for a green room for performers to prepare. There's some office space because a big facility like this is going to take an employer or two. The whole idea here is to construct items that would allow for a more efficient and productive building. It also allows for a really huge expansion of floor space. So one of the things that would have to happen with the movement of the Mineshaft is, for example, all the utilities have to be relocated from the basement to meet code standards that are modern, so we would have to put them at the end of this building. Those are, that's another item that would go in the tenant improvement. So if you look at this and all these wonderful things that we would like to add, if you take the American River Room right across the hallway as an example of how big a space we have today, with the Mineshaft Edition 1, you would almost double, you'd have a space almost double the size of the American River Room with open line of sight to make possible performances and big banquets and that sort of thing that does not exist in our city today. This would create a attraction to our city and a venue for weddings and musical productions and plays. And, you know, right now, for example, Little League can't have a, a family event at the end of their season because there's no room for them that will hold them all. The Junior Lancers said the same thing. We would love a big room where we could have this sort of space. It just does not exist. Plus, it has a couple of wonderful balconies on either side. The second part of our ask, and this would be part two, I should have mentioned, there is a price tag to this, and we know it's a big one. It would be 5.4 million dollars for us to build this very important addition to the Mineshaft Building. As we got into it, we started to think, gosh, maybe we should think big, really big. What would the ultimate, and as you know, at Cordova Community Council, we do this a lot. What would it be if we, what would an ultimate use be? So we looked at adding yet a second pushout area in the center of the building, which takes advantage of the beautiful vaulted ceilings. It is a two-story addition. It expands the view lines for performances. You could actually do theater in the round. You could do a lot of, a lot of extra uses that we, we do not have today. We could have, I, looking at the young people who were here earlier today, I could imagine the Festival of Flowers being there. I could imagine, I even told Donald, we could even have a wrestling tournament there. We would have the space to do some really big things in our city.
We could get some really big fans to move that air around.
Big fans. We have a couple, but we, we'll get some more. So we're calling this the Great Space. And every time I say it, I say it with my hands because it is a great space. The building is unique, and this would give you, in Rancho Cordova, a facility that is, would be unique in the region. And adding the Great Space also adds a lot more space to do some wonderful things. We now have a area that we could seat at least 600 people auditorium-style. That's bigger than the Cordova High School Performing Arts Center. We could have a banquet for 360 minimum or more. And then you add on to that the two, 2,000-square-foot balconies, which we have two of those. Now we truly do have a great space. The beautiful thing about it is, not is it, it's just not a big, empty building. It's a building with tremendous character. And I think that that's the one thing that has captured our imagination the, the most. So on the left, I like to show this because that's the Glacier Hotel in Glacier National Park. And on vacation last year, walking in there, I could really see the Mineshaft looking something like that and being that kind of marker and signature for the city of Rancho Cordova. So on the right, it's the Mineshaft Building, which is sort of decked out, that was actually with chairs and tables set up for the, the Heartstopper's haunted house cast party. That's why there happens to be some chairs there. And you can't really appreciate those beautiful beams quite because it's still set up as a haunted house. But we would certainly want to take advantage of those magnificent architectural features of the Mineshaft to create something truly remarkable for Rancho Cordova and our community. So just, this is what we, how we summarize this opportunity. We, first of all, we're preserving an iconic building for Rancho Cordova and beyond. There is nothing else like this in Rancho Cordova, certainly, but I'm not sure there's anything like it in our area. It is beautiful. It would provide near-term event and performance space, building audiences while your Mills Crossing project evolves. There's, you know, when you open your big performance areas there, you want to have audiences who are in the habit of going to performances, and this can help build those audiences for the future. Believe it or not, we expand, we expect to improve and expand on Heartstopper's as a regional attraction. And this is as mind-blowing as it gets to me because I can't imagine wanting to go to a place just, you know, to be scared witless, but that's exactly what people do in huge droves. We had 14 and a half thousand people who visited this year. We're growing by about 1,000 visitors a year. The total revenue this year was $575,000 in revenue, and a lot of those people stopped and bought gas, went out for a beer at the, our breweries before. They told me that, and I know, went to out for dinner. This is a regional attraction that I have to say has surprised even me. And we have sold out all our nights. This is what we have done in 13 nights in October. So we believe there's huge expansion for that regional attraction. We want to add this event space in capacity, not currently available for Rancho Cordova and residents. That's easy. As you know, we have unlimited parking. I won't belabor that. Our project is shovel-ready. We have already invested in the building plans, the engineering, all that needs to happen to make this project a go. We are ready to go. We are not requesting ongoing funding. We need help to get it up and running or get it built, but then we would use our own money and our own know-how to create a beautiful event space for Rancho Cordova. I feel like I must say that you know us. We've been your partner in the city for, well, we predate you by about 30 years, but for the last 20, we've certainly been your partner. And we would, we would enjoy working. You know, we could, it should be said that we could hold on to this property. This, this project is being driven by you, not us. You need this property. We are your partner. We're going to get it to you, and we want that to happen. So this is our idea growing from that project that is being driven by you. So we think we can really make this happen pretty fast. We expect you tonight will buy this property from us, and that will finalize the sale of the property early next year. We would look to be installing the basement in the summer, next summer. We would host Heartstopper's next fall for another year in the existing building. The building would move right after Heartstopper's next year, and we would be ready to move in to our brand-new building the next summer so that we don't miss a year of Heartstopper's. So we would be in the new space for Heartstopper's 2024. I know some of you have been out to the property to look at it. I don't, the hour's late, and I don't want to take up more time, but I'd love to hear your questions. How can we make this happen?
Thank you, Shelley. Questions for staff or for Shelley? Donald?
Well, just on the presentation, although I didn't realize we were doing this part tonight, I thought we were talking about just buying the building. But if we could go back, I'm trying to understand the addition, keep going, keep going, that, stop there.
Yes.
Are, are the square footages, again, not, not, not referring to the American River Room, which is, which is here, just for the, for those online and in the public? But Edition 1 is a total of 6,000 square feet?
Yes.
In the entire building?
Yes.
With the addition?
Yes.
And then, okay. So that's including what is already existing in the building?
Right, exactly. So the expensive part of that addition is the utilities room that'll be there, the, the new bathrooms, the restrooms, the catering kitchen, the things that will make it really a hard-working event space.
So then, I, I guess my second question, this is more for staff, only because it was referred to as far as the timeline. If, if this waited two months, would that change anything from a public works standpoint as far as the overpass or anything else? I just want to understand because the last time that, I mean, Shelley shared part of this conversation when we talked about legacy projects and that there, I, clearly there were some concerns expressed about waiting until the end of January to have this in a workshop with the rest of the legacy projects. Is, is waiting that long going to jeopardize some sort of funding that I'm not understanding?
Councilmember Terry, in terms of the project in and of itself, their, their, the acquisition could be on hold for another two months. There are two separate components altogether, though. The acquisition as, as.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about the improvement side. I'm just saying the, the thing that's agendized tonight is the acquisition of the building.
Correct.
Or, and paying for that, which I believe would, would fund the moving of the building. I'm just trying to understand from the city's standpoint, is there anything that would jeopardize the public works project that needs to happen there, which is the off-ramp and the rest of it? If, if, if we decided on the additional projects that are being proposed at the end of January?
In terms of the project, no. I think the only thing I would add to that is that in terms of Shelley's schedule, there are some of that funding.
Right, but I'm just asking about right now, our schedule? Because that, that's what was first, that we were driving that time, timeline.
Correct. So no, in terms of the project, it doesn't impact anything. Our right-of-way certification is going to come in after we acquire all the property, but this is the, the key initial project, property that we need to acquire.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for now.
Garrett?
Okay, so a couple of questions. Hopefully, we can talk more about this at our retreat as a group and, you know, future plans and whatnot. Because, you know, I have mixed opinions about this property. If we're going to do this kind of investment, why not just buy it off them and then make it a joint venture with the group? Because that would be a good way to, you know, we'll own it, and then we can make those improvements and make it a piece of us. The other thing is, if we're going to spend this kind of money, I mean, not talking, we should definitely buy the property, 100% buy the property. So first off, yes, give them the money, write them a check. Let's get that done so my Cordova Community Council is rich, rich! Number two, if we're going to invest, I wanted, and we're talking about as a group, there's a couple buildings in the community that are up for sale right now that I would love to, you know, talk to them about. If, instead of just investing in this, there's 28,000 square feet that's now up for sale, and buying it and giving it to them for like a dollar, like the church did with us, would also give them an amazing community center and stuff like that. So do we just want to do this, or is there other places? Because I know the biggest option is making, giving them a building that generates revenue for them to make money in the future so they can keep doing great, amazing things. Well, instead of this, can we get them another piece of property that I think would do the same thing with tenants and give them more space in a more centralized, located area? And so I can't really, I want to go into it because I've actually done some research and saw a couple pretty kick butt buildings that are now up for sale in Rancho Cordova that if we gave them, bought it and gave it, because we'd still own it, like I, I believe in owning it, if we're going to put $8 million into it, we could give it to the Cordova Community Council for a quarter of the cost, and they could have instantaneously a giant conference room and more office space, a place for the, the play area, and all this amazing stuff. Like tomorrow, if we all decided as a group that, that we're looking for a space for the Cordova Community Council, not only moving this and cleaning it up and having that property, but you'd have 28,000 square feet instantaneous that you would have control over. Because what I want to do is make it so Cordova Community Council, even if the money was to dry up due to the economy with us, they would have property and management and stuff moving forward. So I, I like that idea. And then I know that there, you know, there's other stuff that would go with this. So I think the idea of it is, is, is sound and, but I want to, like, approach them and be like, I see this property, but there's like three others that I know that would be amazing for you guys.
Do they look like that?
Yeah. Well, they look like the bottom piece, the conference center, not the scary place with the, no, they don't, they don't have scary buildings, and I think that's a dead zombie in the corner, so.
It is.
Having walked through that building today, I will say, it, it's, it's in a state today that makes it hard to, to, to see the, the full vision, having not been in that building before, so.
Okay, Donald, it's still Garrett's turn?
So, that being said, as we go away on this retreat and finally sit down and talk about stuff which we've been planning, like, what are we trying to do for the Cordova Community Council, and how do we? Council, and how do we best partner with them as they take these next steps? Because we need to buy the piece of property, and, and then it's, if we're going to invest that money, I think we should buy it. That way, we can leverage ourselves to protect them and put this building amazing. And if not, I can, can we find them a building in the city that would then do this, still work on cleaning this up over time, but instantaneously give them something that could generate good revenue with, that would help them to continue to do amazing stuff in our city? And I think there's a couple nonprofits that, not only them, but like, you know, the food locker that needs homes in our city. So if we're going to do this kind of thing, I really think that if we identify nonprofits that have really come alongside us and became amazing partners, how do we benefit them the most? You know, and this is a cool piece of property, but do we want that, or can I give them, can we still work on this, but buy them an amazing piece of property that would then be able to accomplish something now and not six months, three years down the road with any type of construction? So, buy the property, write them a check today, let's get that done. And then, let's talk more about this in, hopefully, we do an amazing visiting extension in January that we can actually talk. So I would, I would love to sit down and see what best fits them. That's it. Thank you.
Siri?
So thank you, Shelley, for the presentation. I'm going to break up my comments in two sections. The first part is, do we buy the building and remove it? That part is yes. That said, this is a unique space, and I do appreciate the Cordova Community Council putting in the effort, not just taking the fact that, yes, we can move it, and, but what else can be done with it, right? Because you have, you're right, you've put on your big picture lens, and you've seen that, you know, what you see on the left is what it looks like today. And with that, what it looks like today, you're able to get a revenue of five hundred K per year. Now, if you were to move it and, you know, reposition it with the beautiful windows and this, I don't know what the ceiling is called, but whatever it is, it's beautiful. And I don't think you can rebuild that today. And with that space, just the way it is, you probably will get a lot more revenue, given that it's five hundred K now, looking beautiful in, when we move it, it'll be more. But the fact that, you know, there's more that can be done with this space, and it might look like the Glacier Hotel, which you've also mentioned the fact that we do not have a space like this in Rancho Cordova. There is no large building that can fit weddings and receptions and unique orchestras or performances. That said, this building, you're right, Councilmember Garrett, that there may be other buildings that could fit the need of a large space, but this would be a beautiful building that can, you know, that revitalized, can actually bring more opportunity to the city of Rancho Cordova. And I, that said, Cordova Community Council, there are a lot of good points that you do bring. I would like to see what that this place could do that the Civic Center will not be able to do, right? In terms of, you said it's going to host a lot of events. We've also thought about the Civic Center being, be able to be a place that can host a lot of events. You know, I am just putting on, saying, hey, it's five hundred K this year, the ROI may be a million dollars in 2024, but that's just my rough math, right? Because I'm going to look at it from that lens of, we're going to put in money, how much can we get out of it? So I'd like to see more of what we can get out from a revenue perspective. I mean, if we build it, we will have the Lancers and other opportunities where people can come use it, but what ROI can we get out of this, right? Others is, can we look at examples of revitalized buildings like this? What uses, potential uses have they got? So then we can say, compare with that. And last but not least, this is a big project, and with my short history, I've seen the public come back and say, we were not involved in this process, given that even with the Civic Center, there have been multiple workshops, and, and the public was involved. I think we need to do our due diligence, get the public involved, just, we need to see what they think about this, and then we can then go with a clear conscience of, this is what we want from the city, this is what the public wants, this is what the residents want, and then move forward. So I'd like the city's staff's opinion, the public feedback on this, in order to get to next steps.
Thank you, Siri. David?
All right. Well, full disclosure of the, of this issue, I'm the board chair of the Cordova Community Council, have been for a number of years now. I've been on the board since 2002, and I was part of the movement that professionalized the Cordova Community Council. Now, I received no compensation for that, so there's no conflict here. Like many of us, all of us serve a leadership or only community, this just happens to me, one of my largest. So this, this is a really unique opportunity. Most cities don't have this kind of opportunity. I've never seen anything like this in Rancho Cordova. Probably the closest thing we could get to this would be maybe a mill station, where Linda put in a lot of effort many years ago to save the building, not knowing what it would become, along with a local nonprofit, and then it evolved to something that is just in the past five or six years, really, you know, hit its strength and found what it can produce for our community, and has put us on the map in the region. Is there a question? So I would say, you know, because this is a Cordova Community Council, and this is a unique organization that we have in this community that other jurisdictions don't, because all the community council is, is a partnership of our local nonprofits. There's no, no one profiting from this. There's no investor. And ironically, because of that, because of that very nature of it, this just being a conglomeration of local nonprofits, when this organization has handed five or six million dollars by the city to buy this building and tear it down, most organizations probably say, oh, that's great, I'm going to throw that in the bank, I'm going to live off the interest. This organization, because it is a local organization made up of us, this is us in Rancho Cordova, says, huh, wonder how we can leverage that for the greater good. We got five million, we got this building, we have this haunted opportunity that's really unique, how can we make this even better because of this transition? This is what you don't see in other jurisdictions. This is what makes the Cordova Community Council so special to us. This is us that we're dealing with. It's not them, it's not us and them, it's we in this debate, this discussion. So that's just the nature of the community council. Now, we could probably go on for a really long time talking about what could happen here, weddings, obviously, a lot of theater-like activity, community events that simply cannot be done in Rancho Cordova now. And even going into the future, as our population continues to grow, having one of these is not going to be enough. The fact that this is way off on the eastern edge of Rancho Cordova and has freeway visibility, I think is unique and great, but just think about like the sports groups that can't afford to spend a thousand dollars to rent a room to hold a banquet. That's not, not the way they operate. Think about like Cordova High's senior class holding a prom. Do you know where they have to go to do that now? They go to Roseville, because we don't have a space. And there's no guarantee that even in our Mills Crossing, we're going to necessarily have a space that meets all of those needs as they are needed. I think if you did an audit to figure out what sort of community center space does a community of eighty thousand need, you could find out that we are well below that standard. But there's other things that would happen with this space. Chamber events, regional events, which would be particularly important. So I'm on the Secog board about, well, pre-pandemic, annually, we would go out and do some big events somewhere, we'd bring in speakers, we'd have a big dinner. Can't do it in Rancho Cordova. Do it at the Marriott, that's kind of it. We can't do this in Rancho Cordova. Other communities can do this, Citrus Heights can do it, they've got a huge community center. Even our proposal at Mills Crossing isn't going to be that big. But this building would actually accommodate it. So that would bring attention to us from the region that we currently have no, no means of harvesting. And I love the idea of athletic events in the building. I guess you could have like ping pong tournament there or something, right? I mean, there's probably, there's probably others we haven't thought of, and that's part of the beauty of it. With the community council operating this, nobody has to profit, they can garner enough revenue on site, we can garner enough revenue on site to pay for the operation of it. So unlike, say, a youth center where the city's going to spend, what's our estimate, a million a year, operating, maintaining, programming, some, some number like that, there's no dollar figure for that associated with this project. If you build it and you let our own nonprofits and our own nonprofit leadership run it, they will do their own events there, they will find ways to profit through the haunted opportunity or others similar to it, they will serve the needs of our local nonprofits, that will be their priority, because that's the nature of their organization, because they're us, they don't, they don't need to profit. So I think this is a really unique opportunity, it's incredibly efficient for the city, it saves a historic structure, it gives us more status in the region. I think there's a, there's a question about, you know, is this going to compete somehow with Mills Crossing? I think we just have to set that aside and just think about what our arts strategy is. You know, we want to be a community that has the arts, where the arts are successful, and where the arts help us rejuvenate the older parts of Rancho Cordova, particularly Folsom Boulevard, where the arts sort of put us on the map. And this is not us guessing that this was work, this is a proven economic development strategy all over the country, and particularly in, in situations like we're in in California. But if you look at arts communities, they don't have one venue, right? They don't have two venues. They have a handful of venues with a lot of different things going on. Just think about all the different Christmas activities we hosted this year. This could host several of them, probably would if it were built now, but it's not a single venue that ever accommodates that need, nor would Mills Crossing ever do it, nor would this building ever do it on its own, nor has the theater complex at Cordova done it, nor has what we've done with Mill Station do it. But all of them together, now we're talking about the potential for an arts community to really thrive. So I think we need all of those venues operating. And again, in the end, if the city supports this and allows us build out and gives us this architectural beauty, we're just giving support to us and our organization. So I think this is one of the easiest decisions that's come before this council in terms of supporting a project, investing in the future of our community, and putting a marker down in the region about what we stand for.
Thanks, David. So I'm Shelley. I, I have said many times, I can't believe people pay the amount of money they pay to go and have their pants geared off, and they come from all over, not just this region, they come from other states. It just, they're part of a, like a circuit, a haunted house circuit throughout the United States, which just blows me away. Part of what's so important about continuing to, to fund opportunities like this so that community council can continue to thrive, is the fact that the vast majority of what they do is free to the public. You know, in other places, you have to charge for movies or concerts or whatever. All they ever charge for is, is parking and two dollars to get into the Fourth of July. I mean, you know, this is, this is completely unique. Our issue tonight is really, number one, do we buy the building? And number two, approving a one point two million, one point two eight million for its relocation. The building's got to move, and, and what, how it is used, what it is used for, can be a part of a larger conversation with a little bit more research from staff, some of the questions that Siri asked, some of the questions that Garrett asked. But the issue tonight is really whether or not to approve the purchase and possession of the property and the one point two eight to move it. So.
If I could respond to just a couple before you...
Can I, really quick?
No, let's ask Shelley to respond.
You, you only asked me for questions of staff or Shelley, and then everybody else got to share their, their position on the, on it. Would I be allowed to do that?
You didn't want to?
Well, you didn't ask, you asked if we had any questions, so I asked questions.
Well, everybody else took it. Please go ahead, Donald.
Thanks. I would just, and again, I was just following directions. So my, my two cents, and I think I agree with most of you here, is that we need to move forward on this item tonight. I think we vetted it in closed session and through staff for six months. I think that we've been in conversations about what the value is, the plan. I think when we started it, it was just to buy it, and then we learned more about moving the building. I'm completely fine with that. I, and I think I agree with the mayor that, that we need to vet this, this project and understand all of the ramifications around it. I know I had some questions about if there were overages, who would be responsible for those? Having looked at some of our own projects recently that are some, as much as four times what the original estimate is, that the last time that we were here to talk about legacy projects, it seemed like, just on my, on my napkin, about twenty-five million dollars of ideas and about twelve million dollars left to spend, and we had a couple of them that were even completely vetted, like the, like the Little League, that God knows what we, what we put on staff's plate if we don't go and improve the field over at the junior high, and we, and we build that at Alstrom, and we also said that we would offer something else to the Park District, we have no idea what those will be costing. And so I just, I just want to, I just want to be realistic in the fact that we have, in legacy funding and extra funding at the moment, about twelve million dollars, and this represents three quarters of what is left, without understanding even what Little League will cost. And there was probably another fifteen or so million beyond this project in Little League, just in ideas that we were hoping to get estimates and understanding from the staff by the end of January. But completely supportive of this today. Thank you.
Shelley, I just, someone made the comment that we could just take the money and be rich. That is not what we're proposing here. We're proposing to take money you are paying us for a real estate transaction and then reinvesting it in our city. So this money is not money that would go into the Cordova Community Council bank, woo-hoo, and we have money to spend. No, we're proposing to take the money and then reinvest it in our city. So I just wanted to make that clear. You cannot build this new for what we're talking about. So if there's a thought that, rolling around, I think I heard something along those lines, the architecture and those sorts of things, we could not build it new for anywhere near the number we're talking about here. And these, the numbers I've given you, they are quotes from an actual contractor. Now, I know that that can change, I'm not, but the one reason we are sort of pressing for a decision of what direction you might want to go, is that if we are to start on this project, we need to kind of know what we're building on that basement. So that is one of the reasons we're bringing this to you now. It won't do us any good to just build a basement for a portion of this project and then, and then expect it'll come out the way we envision it. So those are my only other comments. And Siri, I agree with you. I, I always think the public should be involved, and we represent a lot of the public in this project, so I, I totally agree with you as far as getting more input from the people whose money this really belongs to.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I have one more thing.
Garrett?
So, that was a, what I was saying, that was, that was funny.
I know.
That was a joke. So to call it out, like something that it's not, that was a joke. So I was having fun with the situation, that's why I was excited about giving you guys the money. And the second thing was, is that what you were talking about at the other part, was that the, the building itself, there is another opportunity, have another building for you guys along with this one. And so I wanted to look at that, and yes, I do realize that.
I would, I would welcome any of it. The reason I mentioned it, Garrett, is not because, I know you're one of the funniest people I know, and I know you were joking, but I didn't want someone who might not be familiar with the project thinking that we were somehow making a bunch of money off this, and so I just wanted to clarify that. You're funny, I got it, it was a joke.
I'll be more serious in the future. No more jokes.
Everybody heard that, right? Councilmember Garrett's going to be real serious moving forward.
All right, remember, you said that.
I'm taking odds on that right now.
It's too late, we've already broken up.
Okay.
No? Listen.
So we have a, we have a final slide, number thirteen. One more?
We have two more, and I'll just go through it real quick. So just the funding considerations for this, so the acquisition aside, which is coming from a variety of traffic-related funding sources, the legacy fund balance as of this year, so including the allocation for the current fiscal year, is at about six point three million, and with the current additional plans for Little League, is looking to be about five million dollars of that, and then the, what additional... And then the additional 1.28 rounded up to 1.3 for the relocation support that will account for most of the existing legacy balance at this time. And then looking forward at ways that could potentially fund any other additions that the council may desire. Just looking at historical averages of what's been allocated from Measure H for the legacy, it's been about 23% of revenues, so that would look at about $2.7 million next year. And then the Measure R allocation has been about 20% for capital investments, so 2.4 million. So just to give some frame of reference as we move forward as to kind of the cash flow from those two funding sources for projects like this.
I'm, I'm confused. Can you go back? Or unless, are you going to give us a total at some point? Because I, I, I thought when we talked about Little League last time, we were taking the $5 million out of 17-ish million. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm not remembering how that. Or maybe I'm, maybe I added the two together at some point.
So when, when this came forward at the last discussion on legacy, the amount that was in there was 3.5 million because that was the amount that, based on that estimate at that time, and then based on the council direction to put the fourth field at Alstrom and look at some additional improvements. Right now, the estimate for those improvements is an additional $5 million, not $3.5 million. So that's what this represents.
So you added $2 million in as an estimate holder for what?
A million and a half, yes.
Okay.
So that's where the $5 million is coming from.
And that's coming out of the 6.5. So you're saying between these two, we've spent the whole legacy fund balance for, for the coming, for the, through the next fiscal year or the fiscal year that we're in, we've spent all of it, and then we will bank another $5.1 million come July 1, in theory, to spend.
In theory. I mean, that's all based on council direction on the relocation.
So we don't have enough for, for this project right now if we wanted to plan for it in the summer of next year?
Not out of the legacy fund balance currently.
I, I don't think that's a very complete picture. I have to really disagree with, with the presentation in this slide. It assumes a Measure R allocation of 20% based on what we've done historically, but that was a startup period for Measure R. And we were very clear from this dais that we were going to do things to start in a pandemic that we weren't going to continue later. And most of our discussions about Measure R going forward have been talking about capital expenditures of various types. So I don't think saying 20% and 2.4 is very realistic, at least not from my perspective. This also excludes any revenues that we have sitting around that were usable for community facilities that we've been collecting in, in building fees. I think your treasures report tonight pegs that somewhere around $54 million. Now, some of that obviously is committed to Mills Crossing. What we're lacking here, my point is, we are lacking full context to this. This is a snippet with a particular angle that I really do not appreciate. I said this last time this came up. I'll say it again. If we're going to look at five years going forward, at the end of that five years, revenue neutrality ends. What I think I see happening here is we're trying to position this saying, oh, we're really poor as a city. We can't afford this. We need to restrict what we can do. If you've got a once a generation opportunity coming along to say sort of in a narrow-minded way, this is all we can do, I don't think that's what Rancho Cordova is. I think Rancho Cordova dreams big. And this is, this sort of presentation is trying to force us to dream small. So I, I really object to the way that's presented.
I'm not sure if I follow comparatively to last, to the last one time that we talked about it. But yeah, I mean, as we start our, our budget conversations for next year, I mean, we can definitely make separate allocations to a lot of this stuff. But without kind of the totality, David, like, like you're describing, it's really hard to just pigeonhole and go, let's spend it today. But I, I like this project. I also like every other idea that I heard last month or last week, or two weeks ago. And I want to pay for all of them, but I'm, I'm guessing no matter how we slice it, we're going to have to not do something.
I think so. But it, it won't be these numbers we're dealing with. I mean, if we just, if we take one year of revenue neutrality as our fifth year, that's an extra $12 million.
And we're five years out from that?
Yes. 2028 is when that will go away.
So what do we do? We loan ourselves $12 million until we actually get it? I don't have any kind of a fiscal concern about that.
Yeah.
And that alleviates some of the pressure.
I would, I would wonder the legalities are, it's one thing to do it for something we would own. I, I think it was actually really fascinating. I think, Cyrus, I think I was talking to you. Even the ideas around, like the Children's Museum, that's our building. There's bonding capacity to things we own.
Right.
There's not to private facilities.
That's true.
So.
And we are lacking bonding capacity.
And again, again, we're, we're looking at, and bonding today than 10 months ago is more than triple the cost as far as interest, right? So when, when we were talking bonding a few years ago, ah, yeah, that's fine. We can build that building. I mean, the life of it now, you, you're, you're paying for three of them by the time a 30-year bond comes up, right? So just like people's houses are, right? But it's just, it, it's, I agree with you. We need to have a bigger picture conversation about all of this.
But that's why.
And again, the, the numbers even in my head were bigger than these. And I agree with you, they probably are bigger than that. I, I know I've sat on this dais, and even as we went into a pandemic and saying, our reserves are completely on the table as something that we should spend in order to not to cut services, right? And so if it's the right opportunity, like, I don't care if we don't have a balanced budget one year, if we, if we're doing something good. But we have to have those kind of collective conversations and say, this is the, this is the thing that's going to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
And maybe these are the opportunities, but without fleshing out this. I mean, and again, you know, to Siri's point, how many workshops have we had around a $35 million expenditure at Mills Crossing, right? This is a third of that. Should we take a third of the time to have those conversations? I, I don't know. I, I don't know what those, those answers are necessarily. And again, that's our own building. To just write that check, I, we're going to need a lot more information really soon.
And that's why we're probably looking at a joint venture if you wanted to get bonding capacity. I mean, that's the research I did.
To gain bonding capacity as a city.
Yeah. You do, you do a joint venture, and then all of a sudden you own the property. Now you can get bonding capacity, where you can't do that if you do a donation. But I mean, look at the big.
I don't want to solve, I, I personally, I don't want to solve that problem today. I, I trust our staff and our, our city attorney. I'm, I'm just making the comparisons because that's something I hadn't thought of was a million bucks over at the Children's Museum, that's investing in us. And that's, that, that creates a lot of different opportunities that don't come out of this necessarily, right? So understanding where, again, all the pots of money are. I know shortly after, Kim, you got hired. I remember, you know, why can't we land banking, call that reserves, right? And there's rules around that, and I get that. We've had those conversations. But, you know, why isn't an asset, you know, in, in business, you can count on, you know, real estate, all kinds of things as reserves and capital and all kinds of different things. So I, I hope as we go into the, to this next budget conversation that we can have a fuller conversation like that. But also, it's not necessarily, like, like you said, it's not necessarily these two, these two line items are what we rely on to do all of those other things. But they're usually the, the starter fund. And I think luckily here, the thing before us tonight, it's our transportation funds, right? This is, this is something that, that, you know, ultimately, if we don't build this thing, and that's why I asked kind of the timelines, because I'd heard that, that, from the, from the community council, that the staff was driving this timeline. And I, I think I'm hearing that, that's not necessarily the case, that we do have the time to have this conversation. But again, we can move forward on this because this is dedicated funding for this thing, and then we're taking a small amount of money out of legacy funds, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that. But at, at a certain point, I will say that we've been very fortunate through economic downturns and the voters trusting us with additional funds. We do have revenue neutrality coming down in about a half a decade. There are probably ways to pre-fund some of that. There's probably some ways we're not allowed to pre-fund it. But again, it, it depends on the bill. And I would guess borrowing against future revenue for, for, for revenue neutrality is not something we could do with a private project like this. But could you replace that and have funds available from some of our, our public projects? I don't know. I think, I think those are all good conversations to have with staff.
Could decrease our general fund reserve and know that it's going to be backfilled by that in five years. That'd be one way I would think of it.
I, I would be interested at some point to have staff explain to us from a, from a, from an accounting standpoint, how, how you would do that.
That's why we need a bigger picture than this.
Okay, so let's refocus the, the discussion. And on page 13, there are, there is a recommended action. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
So I, I, I will move to approve the resolution and the, the legacy fund balance for the proposed relocation today. My direction to staff is to have a fuller conversation in late January along with the other legacy balance, or legacy projects, because it's not necessarily coming from those funds, on this and the rest of the things that we gave staff direction on at the last meeting, in hopes of understanding what we can and cannot fund, or what, what ability we have to fund and from where.
Okay.
Hopefully, that's a recognizable motion.
Second.
I have a question. Shelley, what does late January do in terms of the timeline with the contractors as it was suggested here?
It would probably require a rebidding of the, the basement project. They've been extending it. We thought this was going to happen earlier in the summer, and it has taken a little longer than we first thought. So we have a, that, that would be the one thing, that it would, we would probably lose that bid and have to re-bid for that. It might be, do better, might do worse. I have no idea. But this is a pre-cast concrete plan for the basement. And that's what's kind of driving it from our point of view is what kind of, what, what, how big is the basement? Are we going to be building?
So if a decision could be reached in January, you'd probably have to get a new bid, but you can still continue with the project?
Oh, yeah. That, that is, that's a true statement.
But at some point, if we get to April, we're going to have to skip a year.
More, more than likely.
Or sometime in there, sometime in between, there's going to be like a drop dead date.
Yeah, as I understand it, there's only certain.
I don't know if that's a good pun for.
Maybe not.
Heart stoppers.
It's a haunt, yeah.
As I understand it, these concrete pre-cast basements, there's a long lead time on them and not a lot of makers of them, and so it's a complicated. Did I get that right? I got to talk to my committee. They're giving me, see what I know about construction?
Okay. I, I just wanted that clarification. I think the motion is fine. Just want to be sure we understand, we can't, can't go a certain timeframe without this whole thing getting kicked back a year.
Right.
And ca, and all the costs being re, redone, yeah.
I, I think what would be helpful between now and January, too, is real phasing to this that would be, do this, move it, and then when, like, if, if we did wait, what would that cost? What would it cost if we did this in this year, right? So if we did this and we didn't have the money, what would that, how would that impact the $5 million? And then how would that impact the additional three that's on top of that? I think that would be very, very helpful to understand.
I think that there's a list of options like that. Maybe you could have a conversation with.
Well, I'm, I'm out with them. But again, I, I'm not a public facilities expert. We have staff that, that do that, and I rely on them to evaluate the proposals that are coming through. Yeah, work together and bring, bring us what is the real number. And again, even these bids, I mean, we got a church for a dollar a year, and we thought we'd spend $2 million bucks. We just visited an $8.4 million project. So even having bids doesn't necessarily mean that we are where we are. And so part of this, too, is we lived in this space. And again, this is why I was bringing up kind of even overages, and that we lived in a space of public facilities, right? We're looking at a community center at Mills Crossing. We're looking, we, we just did a youth center. When those overages, that's our problem. And at some point, we could borrow to deal with those overages. In this case, it's a private facility. So how does that work from the city attorney's, you know, perspective? If there are overages, who's paying for it, right? If there are overages at the pool that we paid for, that wasn't our problem. We put $3 million into it. That's, that's our contribution. The Little League fields, that's, again, the Park District and the School District. We make a contribution. They're doing the work. And at some point, if they have problems with that and timelines or whatever, or too much rain or too much snow or whatever, that's their problem. In, in this case, it's kind of the same thing. And how do we come up with what that is? Because some of the other places, they can bond and do those things that we can do that in this case, it doesn't work that way. So again, I think, I think there's some risk in these, in this conversation that we haven't fully flushed out.
So we have a motion and a second? Garrett seconded it.
Sure did.
Thank you. Any public comment?
We do not have any public comment, and I'm looking at Zoom, and I do not see any hands that are raised.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Bedge.
Yes. Thank you.
And I do want to clarify, I think that $54 million I was referring to is a transportation number. It's not the community facilities number. I do not recall the community facilities number, but it's not that large.
Okay. Stacey, you want to read item 17.3?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the second reinstated grant agreement between the City of Rancho Cordova and the Cordova Community Council Foundation and presentation by Cordova Community Council of Proposed Events and Activities to celebrate the City of Rancho Cordova's 20th Anniversary in 2023.
So good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. Kim Duran-Carr, Georgia Administrative Services Director. So the city has provided grant funds to the Cordova Community Council since 2007 for the purpose of creating a professionally managed umbrella organization for Rancho Cordova nonprofit organizations. Over the past 10 years, general support for the Cordova Community Council has been given in a series of three-year grants coming from the general fund, the most recent expiring this past fiscal, ended this past fiscal year on June 30, 2022. These grant funds ensure that the continuation of key events and community events, including Fourth of July, IFEST, and Kids' Day in the Park, can continue. In addition, the Cordova Community Council has been instrumental in organizing events and activities to celebrate the city's incorporation at each five-year milestone anniversary. As 2023 will signify the city's 20th anniversary since incorporation, CCC has developed proposed events and activities to celebrate this occasion and is here this evening to share and solicit council feedback on some of their ideas. So I'll turn it over to Shelley Blanchard.
Well, long time no see. This one is a lot more fun and a lot easier for you folks to, to sort of consider, I, I believe. You know, there's, tonight, we talked about a lot of wonderful things that have happened over the course of the last 20 years. And now, both at the community council and in the city, and now it can all kind of come together with what we think will be a wonderful year in 2023. So we'd like you to consider keeping us on to do those things. But nothing will be more fun or more engaging than what we see as our 20 years, a million dreams celebration for the 20th anniversary of Rancho Cordova. And I've heard dreams mentioned several times tonight in different contexts. So it's exciting that you kind of were all on the same page about this. Just let me make sure I've got this going the right way. Am I doing something wrong? Did it go to sleep? Oh, there we go. When we think back to the, the founding of our city, who remembers that way back in 2000, too, seems like a million years ago, how the, we were really challenging the citizens here to imagine? And it was like, imagine what it would be like to have five city council members that you'd run into in the grocery store but would be always found at a, a place where you could come and bring your concerns. Or imagine what it would be like to have a police department that focused just on Rancho. Or imagine what it would like to have a city hall. I mean, you can't fight city hall until you have a city hall, right? Imagine what it would be like to release, release energy in the community just to help Rancho Cordova soar to greater heights. So for those of you who may not have been around in those times, it might be hard to imagine that there was a lot of frustration in the community, that Rancho Cordovans just believed their concerns were not being heard. It might surprise you to know that pretty much nobody wanted this to happen except for the people here who could imagine their dreams coming true by building their own city. So with that, in 2023, Cordova Community Council, along with, you know, all of our partners, would like to celebrate all those successes of 20 years and a million dreams that were dreamed for our city and what that can bring after 20 years. So we think it'll be a, truly a magical year, celebrating the Rancho Cordova incorporation, which was a citizen-driven grassroots effort to control local destiny. And it encompassed a million dreams for what a new city could be. We are looking at. We are looking at some really fun and exciting symbols for this, but one of them is an air balloon, and that kind of makes you think about lofty goals and thinking the sky's the limit, and there's no, there's no limits to what we can do when we are our own city and dreaming our million dreams. Our plan is to build this around a beautiful song from the Greatest Showman called "A Million Dreams." And I challenge you to go home and listen to it and listen to the words carefully. The middle part of it really spoke to me when they say, "They say it all sounds crazy. They say we've lost our minds." I heard that more than once during the campaign. And we didn't care if they called us crazy, because we would just run away to what we would design for ourselves. Perfect song that captures the 20 years, a million dreams idea. So here are some of the highlights that we're proposing for your celebration. On Friday, June 30, we would kick off City Magic at the MAC. It would be in the opening of a Million Dreams exhibit at the MAC, which would be a retrospective of 20 years of great accomplishment in the city. There would be a concert, part of our music at the MAC, and a finale performance by a renowned speed painter that has painted at the White House. He's competed on America's Got Talent. You know who he is. He's waiting for you to decide that you want to move forward with this project, and then we can use his name. So that would kind of kick things off. The next day, on July 1, we would put on a show at the Cordova High School Performing Arts Center, featuring the Rancho Cordova Concert Band and Symphony d'Or together in a two-part performance that they are already working on and are very excited about. We would propose that we have an ice cream social at the intermission, and we'd like to see the Rancho Cordova Police Department serving up the ice cream at that. I think it would be fun. The chief left. Well-
But I know they're fans of ice cream.
I think it's just a natural, right? On Monday, July 3, we are very fortunate that we have this giant event that's already kind of tailor-made to entertaining our community. And you see that train right there? That's part of it. I'm going to move ahead, go into detail a little bit more.
Do we have a city council meeting in Hagan Park?
No, you would have your city council meeting here at City Hall. It is one of your regularly scheduled dates. It's the first Monday of the month. We would propose like a kicked-up city council meeting. This is sort of the official part of your 20th anniversary, where you could, as city council members, you could make your observations that you want shared at this important milestone. We would screen the anniversary video here. We would, you could accept anniversary greetings from dignitaries from other communities, which I'm sure would happen. I would love to reunite the Rancho Cordova five-year-olds who have joined us every five years as our community is growing.
Volunteer at least one of them.
They're 20 years old now. How did they turn out? We know how our city's turning out.
Charlie will be 20 by that time.
Yes, of course, they all should be 20. Then, we would, see that train up there? We would roll that train in, and you would be able to climb aboard. I think we should do a champagne toast or something, and we'll get a RCPD escort and drive you down to the Hagan Park on this train.
I love the train.
It's at least as good as a horse.
Well, I said this before when I was talking to my friend Cyrus about this. I saw a grown man fall in love with the train when we were talking about it.
Who was that?
Cyrus Abhar. His eyes got big.
I immediately fell for the train idea, so.
I really did.
Whole secret.
Well, I can see why.
When you get down to Hagan Park, there would be two hot tethered balloon rides for the public. We would be giving rides to them to experience what it feels like to have a lofty goal and dream a dream. We would make special upgrades to the concert. We are looking into screening your video on a stage video wall so that the community as a whole can see it out there. We'd make special upgrades to our Million Dreams fireworks show that night. We have, we are designing a special art project for public participation. It sort of sounds like one idea that's gathering some steam is to have giant letters made out of wood, D-R-E-A-M, and people can write on there and paint on there their dreams for the next 20 years of our great city. We'll be designing other Share Your Dreams activities. All of our art groups are very interested in that. And since we are talking about looking to the sky and the sky's the limit, have a flyover with some airplane banners saying "Happy Birthday to Us." So that's Civic Events Day. On the 4th, as luck would have it, we happen to have a parade planned on the 4th of July. So we are proposing that this year, it would be the 9:00 AM Million Dreams Mile, followed by the 10:00 AM Million Dreams Parade, and you would lead the parade in the train. You can have the train in the parade. I would like to propose that we do post-parade train rides for the public. We could make a little, you know, a little route where they could ride the dream train until it's time to go to the 4th of July celebration, which opens at 4:00. In Hagan Park, once they get there, again, we would be offering balloon rides for the public, special kicked-up concert and screen, you know, video wall, the special upgrades to our fireworks show, special art project for, you know, basically many of the things that you would have seen on the 3rd. We get 25,000 people now at the 4th of July and the 3rd of July. The more we do this, the more evenly it gets space. It used to be 25% came on the 3rd and 75% came on the 4th. Now it's getting close to even, and part of that is because we offer the same thing both days. So you don't have to, it's not better on one day or the other. They're both great days. So with that, we also propose that as part of this, we would, the beat would go on, that we would make the state of the city the state of the, you know, 20th anniversary version of the Million Dreams City. And then we, for the Rancho Cordova Community Christmas tree lighting, proposing we could get a lighted 20 or something like that for the top of the tree, have maybe an adornment to the tower at Village Green, and then special Million Dreams giveaways from Santa to children, all working with that theme of 20 years and a million dreams, which I really feel just captures our city so perfectly. So of course, there will be other surprises along the way, but this is sort of the ideas we are going with. What do you think? Linda likes it?
I like it. Actually, when I read this the other day, I really thought, hmm, way to go. Thank you.
Donald?
Looks good to me.
Garrett?
Same.
Siri?
Thank you for your imagination to imagine what this event could be. I really appreciate all the effort that you put into it and looking forward to seeing how it's actually going to come out.
Beautiful. David?
I think it looks great. There may be some little tweaking or something that Shelley just said that goes on during the year as we dream up other opportunities, then mesh with this, and other opportunities come along. But I think this is, this is great. I was actually sitting here thinking, if you went to a private contractor and said, "Hey, we want to celebrate our 20th anniversary," what would we be spending for something like that?
Sure.
There was a time when I was in charge of the 4th of July and we talked to a consultant in Folsom about running the 4th of July, and her fee for doing it was, I think, $120,000. And the total budget of the event was probably $150,000 or $180,000 at that point, something in there.
That was in 2003.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's a-
Well, I think that, I think that the great thing about this is we have wonderful tools, which we have developed over the last 20 years, that we can leverage. We have the MAC. We have a band. We have a symphony. We have 25,000 people coming to our 4th of July. We have so many wonderful things that we didn't have when we started out 20 years ago that we can just pull into action, making it an affordable event.
Very impressive.
Okay. Kim? Stacy, do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item, and I am looking in Zoom, and there are no hands that are raised.
Okay, so our, our action tonight is to adopt the resolution?
Move the item?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you. You rock.
Mr. City Attorney, can we take item 17.4 and 17.5 and move them both together?
Second.
You cannot by law.
All right.
That was awesome how you seconded it.
Your friends in Bell do not second your vote.
Ah, yeah, that's true. 17.4, I got you.
Okay, so we'll ask Stacy to read the item into the record.
17.4, Resolution Updating the City Salary Range Table and Approving an Employment Agreement Between the City and Mica Runner for Service as the City Manager and Setting the Terms of Employment, Including Salary and Benefits.
Now, can I move it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The legacy of the City of Bell is that we need to give an oral report on a regular council item when the council adopts executive compensation and changes. And we are very pleased to have before you a proposed amendment, approval, rather, for an employment agreement for the council-selected new city manager, Mr. Runner. The staff report details Mica's qualifications and experience, and it's also detailed in a press release for those of you who are interested. We're all excited about the council's selection. Few particulars, the annual salary that he will be proposed to receive is $265,000. The other major contract terms will be quite substantially similar, nearly identical to those of outgoing city manager Cyrus Abhar, including a nine-month severance, a auto allowance, and benefits other than that that are generally consistent with those received by all the city's department heads. I appreciate the assistance of the HR manager, Brenda Roach, on this matter, and the council's careful consideration of candidates leading up to this moment here today and your direction to labor negotiators for the conversations with Mr. Runner.
Thanks, and I would just clarify, I wasn't, I just, we've already said it about 10 times tonight that we were doing this. I didn't want to necessarily skip any law here, but-
Understood.
Thrilled, and I would just say as mayor during this process that I appreciate staff and the city attorney's assistance and support in getting to this point in such a quick fashion. Thrilled to be hiring this guy. Happy to make a motion whenever it's deemed necessary.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Great. A public comment on this?
There is no public comment received.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you. Mica just fell off his chair.
Now he's really had it.
Congratulations, Mica.
Don't get injured. You haven't even started yet.
No, for Christ's sake.
He's already going out on a, he's already-
Okay, 17.5?
Do we need a staff presentation for this, or can we move it?
You want to read it in?
Sure. A resolution approving the 2023 Rancho Cordova City Council meeting schedule.
Okay. We have a motion?
And a second?
And if we could, just a quick comment here. We do need to train you on the new Brown Act law that replaces AB 361. We'd hoped and planned to do some of that work tonight. It is included in the new laws presentation that we'll give to you at also the end of the meeting on January 3. If you would like a few minutes about it. It really does substantially change the way you need to think about and expect to do business next year, you know, consistent with the desires of many of you to come back to in-person meetings. So if you'd be willing to hear, it is the kind of thing that we would hope to tell you about once and remind you of, so that none of you make vacation plans that are inconsistent with the law or travel plans, that it really does reestablish essentially the normal pattern. So if you would like to indulge us with a couple of minutes on it so that we're reminding you rather than teaching you.
Let's put that on the agenda for next time.
Okay. Then what we'll, we had, again, we'd been happy to do a few minutes for you tonight, and again, also, but-
Well, it's kind of extensive, and when we, when we heard it at LAFCO, there were a variety of questions, so we do need some time.
Okay, so we will include it in and probably spend specific 10 minutes on it when we cover it in the legislative-
Maybe we can have the early workshop for the first meeting in January?
And, but again, the punchline for you to just prepare yourself for is, is you need to attend meetings in person 80-plus percent of the time, and you need to tell staff if you're not going to be there, because we cannot just-
You have to go back to the posting.
We have to prepare the environments where you would be attending other meetings.
It's pretty much, AB 2449 is pretty much back to Brown Act.
Yep.
Not quite, but for the public-
Four of us have lived through that.
For the public, it'll be, it'll be much, it'll be much more inclusive and up to date. For the council, it'll be, it'll be back to almost normal.
Yeah.
Okay, so-
I have one quick request on 18.
No, hang on a minute. Did we actually vote on the, no, I didn't think so. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the meeting schedule.
Call the roll. Can I get the motion again?
Donald and David, thank you, or Siri. Actually, it was Siri. Okay, well, we'll deal with that. Okay, I get it. We'll deal with that. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Okay, council requests for future agenda items.
I have one brief one. And I had hoped to do this before, but I'd like to have an item come back so that we can name the main room, the main meeting room or space of the Rancho Cordova Youth Center after Cyrus Abhar.
Okay, okay.
Like that to be back on one of our agendas very soon.
Sounds like a lovely idea.
Hopefully, we don't need to go through the naming committee for that one, folks.
No, I wouldn't think so.
So what is it, the main hall?
The main room where we had the dinner.
The giant room.
The big room.
The Donald, Terry, Cyrus, Abhar.
Oh, no, don't name, I don't need anything named.
Have we checked with Cyrus?
Okay.
He's smiling. I'm hoping he's okay. I was trying to make it a surprise.
It is a surprise indeed.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen-
You didn't have a different room in mind, did you? Okay, good.
So, ladies and gentlemen, with that, we want to adjourn this meeting, and we want to do it by wishing everyone Merry Christmas. And I'm going to say Feliz Navidad. And David?
Prohvi vina khen.
Siri?
Okay, give me two minutes on this one. So first off, nak chala garvanga undi, sitting here in the council, nintelaglo maatla kalnand ko. Mi andar ki, kottha samajra shoba kaansalu. Rancho Cordova ke meri deesh vasio. Naye saal ke liye, mere tamanna aapke liye yeh hai, ki jo khwab aapne dekhe bhi nahi, wo bhi pura ho jai. Thank you.
Okay. Garrett?
Happy Kwanzaa.
Donald?
Feliz Navidad. Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Feliz Navidad, Merry Christmas. Be safe. Happy New Year.
Okay, and may God bless us, everyone. Good night, all.